We're going to call this meeting, your order at this time. We're going to ask Commissioner Williams to give the invocation and the pledge.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, once again, dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your blessing, you have shared on each and every one of us together here this afternoon. But most of all, Father, we thank you for your son, Jesus Christ. Father, we always ask you to look after our troops that they serve abroad and serve around the world. Those that gave their utmost sacrifice years and years ago to protect our democracy and give us the freedom to have an open discussion concerning our business of this county, this state, and this nation. Father, look after this board as we do this business tonight. We as elected officials are the governing body for the Columbia County, Father. But once again, Father, out of all the blessings that I've asked for, I have to say again, thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, who with the cavalry, he shed his blood. He was dead and buried the third day he rose from the dead, seated at the right hand side of the Father, where he comes to judge the quick and the dead. In his name, in his name, amen, amen, and amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions to this agenda?
Yes, sir. We have three, or sort of three additions. The first addition, of course, is Mr. Tom Opsis from the Board of Health. The second addition is to move the public hearing for the Florida Gateway Fairgrounds improvements to the front of the agenda. And the third one is a request authorization for receivership petition for Lake City, her Lake Shore Hospital Authority. And then we have several deletions as well. We have been requested by the anti-madups board to delete or to remove their request to fund football and basketball leagues from the agenda. We would like to remove item number four, or no, we're going to leave that one in, never mind.
Out of which?
I'm sorry? We're going to delete consent item number three, emergency minute. It was previously adopted and is duplicate. And that's, that's it.
Number three on which one, David?
Consent agenda, item number three, emergency minute.
Oh, on the consent agenda, okay.
Yeah, it had been previously adopted and erroneously was added back into this meeting.
Chair, I want to remove item number six on the consent agenda and bring it to discussion.
Number six, bring it to discussion.
Item numbers, oh, okay.
David, on the anti-madups, we can remove that from the agenda. But I still want to take a little time to address the Columbia Youth Football Association that's here tonight on the issue that happened this past weekend. So at this time, I'll ask for approval of the agenda.
So moved them.
A second. Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, Tom, we always let you go first because you've been hard at it all day. I know, I've seen y'all doing testing and stuff.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, thank you so much for allowing me to come. Just wanted to give you a quick update. Anytime I have COVID numbers, it's still a negative, but I can tell you things are a little better than they were last time I stood in front of you. So I always like to give you a few numbers. Over the last seven-day period, we've had roughly 400 cases, all right, which is much better than our worst seven-day period, which was eight, nine through eight twenty-five, where we had 1,060 cases during that seven-day period. The other number that we were tracking were what were the trends over a 30-day period in comparing that to the total COVID numbers. At one point on eight twenty-four, we were up to almost 30% of our cases had happened within a 30-day period, all the cases that had happened in Columbia County. And at that, that point, there were 3,743 cases that we had had over that 30-day period. That was almost 30% of our total. Today, we're down to 18.29%, so a nice drop. Again, with the 400 over seven-day period, still higher than where we had been trending. We were less than 100 before the spike hit. So we are seeing a trend downward, and I just wanted to update you on that. Also, keep you apprised that the testing vendor that the county was so instrumental in helping us get, they're still out at South Side. They test Sunday through, excuse me, Tuesday through Sunday from 10:00 to 7:00. And they've been running tests that quite frequently. The county folks are going out there and visiting that site. The results they're getting typically two to three days. Those are free exam or free tests for the people that go out there. So the results are roughly two to three days, which is running normal compared to any lab that is available. So, you know, what the county helped provide is a great service for the community, and I'm very appreciative of that. And I just wanted to let you know that we just submitted today a grant that will assist the school district with some of their things. It was a $1.2 million grant that we submitted the budget for today. That should be final approved, and that's going to help provide test kits and things to the school district so that they can help keep kids in school instead of having them at home. If we're able to show that they're negative and free and clear, we can keep them in school. So we're excited about that. So with that, I'll just open it up to any questions you may have.
Tom, looking at the people that I personally know have passed with from COVID complications.
Yes, sir.
It seems like we are losing more people under this new virus than we did last year when we just had the plane COVID-19.
What we're seeing is the Delta variant, which the majority of the cases that are in Florida right now are Delta variant, over 80% of the cases. And I can't tell you who has a Delta variant or not when we had the test. But those, those results are provided to the state lab. But we're seeing that those, you'll have some that it's a very minor case, and we're very thankful for that for them. But we are seeing more cases where it's more profound. And, you know, they're, they're ending up in the hospital and a lot of them in ICU, intubated. And we're seeing, we are seeing more deaths due to this. And, you know, I don't know whether it's all COVID, but it, it, it all gets pointed to COVID. But we are seeing high numbers, yes, sir.
If I'm not mistaken, last week, week before that, Father, week before that last week, especially a week ago, we were shot on bed at Lake City Medical Center, and they was taking them on to Gainesville instead of stopping there.
I believe that was two weeks ago, maybe even last week some, but I think they're, they're.
Come down now.
Yeah, they're, they're able to handle capacity. And, and last time I talked with the hospital, they were able to accommodate most of what was coming in. There were some delays, they were doing some transfers, but I believe right now that they're, they're handling everything. And Commissioner Williams, you bring up a point. I just want to touch on something. Total deaths, you know, we, we don't ever want to wish death on anybody, but total deaths that are tagged as COVID to date in Columbia County are 269, okay? And I think the, the other question that I get a lot when I come here, and I'll touch on it real quick. We've had over 23,000 residents fully vaccinated. And out of those 23,000, it's 23,321. But out of those, we have had 372 breakthrough cases. So that's somebody who was fully vaccinated, who still contracts COVID. So, you know, I've explained how that, that breaks down previously. The percentage on that is 1.5% of the people that have been vaccinated have still gotten COVID. And, you know, the, the numbers could have been much higher. The vaccine companies predicted it could have been, Moderna and Pfizer said it could have been up to 7%. And Johnson &amp; Johnson said it could have been up to 35%. So we're, we're in Columbia County, we're sitting at 1.5%.
Do we have the numbers on how many of those were hospitalized? We probably don't have those.
I don't have those in front of me. You know, we did go back and look at certain numbers and, and looked at vaccines and stuff like that. It was across the board, it wasn't one vaccine over another. So, and if that's something that you need, let me, let me work with the state and see if they'll.
I'm just curious, because have we had an uptick in vaccinations? Because I don't ride by there much, not really, because I went by there today, and I think y'all were doing them today, weren't you?
We do them every day.
Oh, okay, you still, I didn't see a line like that before, so.
No, not, not like it used to be, no, sir. The, the largest uptick we had is when, when we were in that 1,000 range of really the hospitals being, dare say overwhelmed, but the healthcare systems were, were really working overtime. And at that point, vaccines did go up, but, you know, we're still under 50%. I'll get the latest updated numbers tomorrow. I believe last Friday it was 46% of the county. And, you know, the uptick that we had last month, if you look around the state, Miami-Dade always has a large number just because they have a large population in, in general. But where the larger upticks of positive cases, it was rural communities and those that had low vaccination rates is where the majority of the cases were showing up.
Tom, doing, in your analysis of everything going on, do you keep up with the COVID cases, vaccine versus unvaccinated? Do you track that also?
As far as hospitals?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I don't have that number in front of me, but the, the last data that the hospitals were putting out, there were two numbers. And, and as I've shared with you before, numbers can say a whole lot of different things. So what, when they were putting numbers out a couple of weeks ago to let people know the, the capacity of what was taking place in the hospitals, you were hearing that maybe 70% of the people in the hospitals were COVID. And that was due to other people were there, they were in for transplants, all kinds of other surgeries. That's what made up the, the other percentages. But of the percentages that were COVID-related, that were in ICU and in the hospital, it was almost 99% were unvaccinated.
And, and that, if that's the case, that is trending with the national trend.
Yes, sir.
Because about 99.6% nationwide.
Yes, sir.
If you want to catch a COVID is unvaccinated.
Yes, sir.
So that trend is, is also, is that same trend, yes?
So the, the last thing I want to share with you, I provided a flyer to you. The, the new staff, they, they should have gotten this in their email today. We have worked with Legacy. They have set up a monoclonal site here in Lake City. So, you know, if you're not vaccinated and you end up positive, we do have the monoclonal antibody site here so that we can, we can treat it another way to try and keep you out of the hospital. So I wanted you to be aware of that and have that flyer.
Now, this, this treatment, this antibiotic treatment, it is no cost we have to pay for.
It, it is no cost to the individual. If you have insurance, they ask for your insurance card, they'll, they will bill insurance a fee. If you're uninsured, that there, there'll be a fee that's billed to the, the government. But there is no cost, out-of-pocket cost to the individual.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Tom, as always, we appreciate you coming and giving us a report. Oh, we're going to do the certified public purpose for Florida Gateway Fairgrounds this time. Commissioner Murphy, would you like to introduce your guests?
Yes, we've got here tonight the board and the, from the Columbia County Resources. Stephen Bailey, our president, is going to come up and explain the process of what we're doing on the way that we're applying for this grant, and I'll let Stephen take it from there and then.
Thank you, Commissioner Murphy. Good evening, Commissioners and residents. I am Stephen Bailey, I'm the president of Columbia County Resources, Florida Gateway Fairgrounds. And we, as the Fairground Boards, are a nonprofit agency located here in the county. And we have an opportunity as a fair board, that as we are chartered, to be able to apply for a grant through the Florida Department of Agriculture to expand or the agricultural education and promotional facilities. It is a grant that's done through the Department of Agriculture. It requires a public hearing by the Board of County Commission in the county to declare a public purpose for the expansion or use of the funds. And our proposal for the grant that we are writing that has to be turned into Tallahassee on October 1st is to, at the rodeo arena, as every once in a while, we are proposing to cover the rodeo arena, add a little bit of additional seating around the arena, and then also build a, a building on the outside of the arena that can be used for additional meeting space and outside space through for the UF Extension Office and all. We are in a partnership with IFAS, and specifically our local Extension Office, for a, for trials that they're used, they've set some plots of different types of grass and testing sites that they're doing. Unfortunately, the weather has not been anyone's friend this year in production agriculture, and they were not able to, the plots all drowned, honestly. And they're, they're, if you all grow out there now, they're still underwater. But they, they're using, they're wanting to use our site as a tri-state meeting area that they're able to bring folks from different states into, to the facility. So we like to apply for this grant to see if it will, we can, if we can meet the, the grade on it for the state and get funding on it to expand the facilities. And so we would ask that you would hold a, a public hearing and then declare that it is a, a public benefit. And you have a resolution that's in your packet that was prepared for you guys. And I'll take any questions.
Mr. Chair, he said the deadline, the deadline is October 1st. We have not advertised it for a public hearing, so does that mean that we're going to have to call a special meeting to have a public hearing? Mr. Foreman, how will we handle this?
You're going to have the public hearing right now.
Yeah, we're going to have it tonight.
Will we go have it, okay?
Yes, sir.
It was on the agenda as a public hearing.
Okay, all right.
So I guess we can.
Yes, sir.
So now, this time we'll open up public hearings. Is anyone to speak for or against us applying for this grant? Not seeing anyone, we'll close the public hearing this time?
But Chairman, I move we adopt the resolution authorizing the request for a grant to make improvement at, at the fairgrounds.
Second.
And, Chair, before we take a vote, myself and Joe talked this afternoon. I sit on this board and have for several years, and at this time, I would recuse myself from the vote, but I 100% support everything we're doing out there.
Okay, Commissioner Murphy, we'll move on with the vote at this time. All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you, Commissioner. Stephen, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay, at this time, we're going to ask.
And board. I got, if I don't say hello to the board, they'll get mad at you.
Good job, board. Hope y'all get this. Mr. Williams, would you come up at this time and address the, I guess you wanted to do a Lake Shore Hospital Authority receivership to the county?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, county attorney foreman, county staff. I normally do not address you as the executive director of the authority, but I am here in that capacity tonight, and I appreciate you making this opportunity available. I'd like to begin by introducing a few of the trustees that are with us. Ms. Lori Chauncey, she is the most tenured of all the trustees of the Lake Shore Hospital Authority. Brandon Beal, Brandon, of course, is the authority chair. We have the authority counsel, Mr. Fred Kobelin. And here tonight in attendance for other things, there are several former members, including your own Commissioner Murphy, who have served on the Lake Shore Hospital Board of Trustees. And so we're glad that they're here, and we recognize them for the prior service. There's a lot of institutional knowledge on this board about the authority. Commissioner Williams, he would go back to when the authority was actually a dependent taxing district back in the mid, late 80s. And I can recall very clearly that, you know, there was a declaratory judgment suit, and there was a determination made in court that the authority was independent and not dependent for the adoption of its millage. And of course, things have been changed ever since. But I come to you tonight to inform you that the Lake Shore Hospital Authority, which is an independent special district and was created in 1963, does not and has not had a quorum of trustees since before the June meeting. So we basically not had a quorum for three months. On the authority, trustees are appointed by the governor. There are seven trustees. It requires four to be a quorum. That's not something created by bylaws, that's actually in the enabling legislation. And we currently only have three. We, of course, have notified appropriately those parties necessary for making appointments. To this day, which is only a couple of weeks short of the end of the fiscal year, we do not have an appointment. And while we continue to hope that we will receive an appointment and have a quorum, we simply do not know that that will happen. And so because we only have two weeks left in the fiscal year, we do not have a budget authority for the next fiscal year, we felt like it was only appropriate that we start looking at the what-ifs. And of course, the what-if is what if we do not receive an appointment? And what if we have to do something with the assets of the authority? Now, in the law, there is a process for special districts such as the authority, should they no longer meet their legislative requirement. We call it a decertification process. Depending on which of those processes take place, it could be anywhere from as short as eight months to as long as 24 months in order to get it decertified. The problem is whether it's eight months or it's 24 months, is that period of time is far too long for the assets to remain unmanaged and for the assets to remain simply in limbo. The assets that we're speaking of is the authority has approximately 23 million in cash. That's both in investments and operating. It has 175,000 square foot of buildings, which is an approximate number. It has numerous acres of land. And more importantly, we still have a medical assistance program that we have been operating. We have approximately 90 clients who receive primary care through the authority. And some of that care includes pharmacology, which means that through federal programs, we actually assist these clients in obtaining their prescriptions. But at the end of this fiscal year, in a couple of weeks, those programs will all terminate. And we began to think, well, what should we do? And quite frankly, we were unable to find any precedent for the situation. We, we looked at prior decertified authorities and other special districts, and they were all different in some way. But we simply, and I simply do not think that it's appropriate to leave those types of assets unattended. I think it goes without saying that should we be decertified, you, as the Board of County Commissioners, will by default receive those assets regardless. So it would seem that you would be the appropriate party to come to at this juncture. Let me explain what I have just explained and ask you if you thought it would be in the taxpayer's best interest to ask the circuit court if they would create a receivership, naming the Board of County Commissioners as the receiver. You're elected, you represent the public today, you certainly manage money, you certainly manage processes, you manage assets, it seems to be a natural transition. Not to say that we're not in hopes that we'll still get an appointment. But, you know, two weeks, we didn't want to wait till the very last minute. So I think it's important that we look at what options would be. I will say that I earlier read the summary that county attorney foreman prepared, which is attached and made part of your agenda. I thought he did an excellent job. I think if you want something to read that just summarizes what I am saying, that would be a good document to do. But in short, I am simply asking as the executive director, if you, as the Board of County Commissioners, would be willing to petition the court to create a receivership, which basically would mean that you would begin to perform the functions and duties of the Lake Shore Hospital Authority Board until such time as a trustee is appointed or a quorum is restored and/or a decertification occurs. And that is the, that is the request.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Dale, here's my understanding, if the, if the board, and I think the board should do it, does this, that mean that the judge will authorize all expenditures, sign off on all expenditures?
Again, this is unprecedented territory, Commissioner, but I would think that you would adopt a budget just as the authority would. But now, if you wish to deviate from any of the statutory obligations or et cetera of the authority or the policies, that would probably require that you go back and get a circuit judge to approve it. So I would leave that more to the attorneys in terms of what the proper procedure would be, but there would be court oversight where court oversight was needed, yes.
That's the word I'm looking for, court oversight.
There would be court oversight.
Dale, what is the, what is the board's deadline as far as a proposed budget? I mean, October 1st?
It's technically, it's technically passed, Commissioner. I mean, it would be very difficult at this point. You'd have to go into the default provisions under the TRIM guidelines. But let me say this about that part of it. The current fiscal year, the millage levy of the Board of Trustees is 1/10,000th of a mill, Countywide, it generated $300. So when you adopted your budget, under the umbrella of the hearing, you had a, a couple of different components. One of those was you adopted funds that levied ad valorem tax, and then you adopted funds that did not levy ad valorem tax. I think at this stage of the game, probably if you become the receiver, and I was standing in front of you, and we were trying to adopt the operating budget for the next fiscal year, we're not even going to worry about any ad valorem. It probably is just, it's not worth going through the default process for $302. It's not worth keeping a slot on the tax bill just to have the authority's name on it. So we would basically adopt it as not levying ad valorem taxes. And I think that simplifies it, but regardless, it is a budget adoption process that would have to be done.
One more question. So, so it's my understanding, at some point, if we wait, we're going to receive this also? If the governor does not appoint anybody else to the board?
Yeah.
And, and if they do appoint a new board or appoint enough people to the board, they can take it back over at that time, is that correct?
Correct. And I, you know, I guess that someone or some other party could be designated, but I did not see any decertifications that did not go back to the Board of County Commissioners. I'm not saying there's not any, but it, you know, it's logical that you would receive those assets. It's logical.
Which Williams?
Dale, I get asked all the time from, from residents of the county, what is the status of Lake Shore Hospital? And I, I know, can you give the board an update on where we are?
Sure.
Trying to do something, the board trying to do something with, with the hospital?
Be glad to. Be glad to. Of course, as most of you are aware, the hospital, for all practical purposes, was operated by community health systems. They notified the authority, I guess it was June or July of last year, that they wished to terminate their lease. And they did pay a future value for the lease. They did pay the lease, they just paid it as a lump sum. And that money, of course, is part of that 23 million that I just spoke of. The trustees indicated that they felt they owed it to the community to try the very best they could to have Lake Shore restored as a hospital with at least the same level of services that it had been operating under. So that would be an ER, that would be an OB, and that would be all of the ancillary services that go with them. We issued RFPs. We did not get any RFPs from any hospital provider saying, we want to come and operate it as a hospital. So we basically started going to them. And I'll just save you six months' worth of work. At the end of the day, if you want a hospital at that facility, Lake Shore, you can get one, but they won't. And this is not just any one, this is a number of providers. They want to be indemnified for losses. CHS, according to the documents they filed with the Agency for Healthcare Administration, ACHA, indicated they were losing $8 million a year. So the truth is, is you could easily get in a situation where you could levy the legislative maximum in millage and still, under that type of an arrangement, would not be able to subsidize losses. It's a terrible time. It wasn't just COVID, but the economics of hospitals are such that rural hospitals are in its, rural hospital closures in and of themselves are pandemic. They're closing daily across the country. At one time, we had an app and it notified us when there was a closure and we were getting a, a notification daily. It was just they could not, they could not compete in the market. And I think any of you that read Florida Trend and other business magazines, there's been a lot of articles as of late. You know, they say pretty soon you're going to have, what, five conglomerates that control and run the hospitals in the southeast. So it's that trend, it's moving that way. Rural hospitals have a hard time competing. Now, the meeting where we were at, we had to cancel because of the lack of quorum, which this would have been June. What we were going to do on the agenda is to recognize the status and then move to other options. Now, I hate to say, but because we did not have a quorum, I can tell you, we did lose out on basically a partnership with a medical firm that was going to provide acute care services, very similar to what you see at what Shands calls regional hospitals in Alachua, except they wouldn't be full-blown ERs, but they would be the next level. But we were not able to, you know, to, to circle the wagons and to negotiate and to do those things, and they've moved on to other markets. Now, having said that, there are still some very promising uses for those buildings. Very promising. One of them involves your own public health unit administrator. So we've got some ideas, we've got some suggestions. As far as the main hospital itself goes, she's 110,000 square feet, she's old. Now, we have kept it up, we have maintained it, it is expensive. That is a $65,000 a month upkeep. The trustees agreed to do that until they could figure out whether or not it was going to be reused for some other purpose. You cannot maintain, nor should you try to maintain, that level of cost for an empty building. But if you were to close it, and we would have had the opportunity to put a client in there, cleanup alone would have exceeded what we've expended. But we do keep humidity control, we do keep all the certifications up, fire extinguishers on the wall are within check, whatever it may be. You know, we just renewed the underground fuel tank license. We, we've kept the building up, we maintain them, we still have the landscape services, we still have security on the building. But it is time, it is definitely time, and I know my trustees would agree with me, that we find other users for those buildings. It is also time that we take a look at our medical assistance program and that we try to retool it to best fit those new uses of those buildings. Now, in the terms of overall healthcare, I think it's important to point out that when we lost CHS, we entered into an agreement with the medical center. It's basically the same pay structure, which is the Medicaid rate. So when a primary care doctor under contract to the authority has to send a patient to the hospital, and we're talking about qualified clients, and the hospital provides services for that client, we pay or reimburse the hospital just as we did Lake Shore. So it's not as if the clients are not getting ER services when ER services are required. We, we are doing that. So, but any authority that I had to continue running the Lake Shore Hospital Authority was simply because we had an approved budget. So the things that I've done, I've done because we had an approved budget and they were within the budget. I lose that authority the end of this month, as you well know. So come the first, if we do not have some interim plan, some interim way, then I assume we're going to shut things down and I'm not even sure what to do with the keys at that point, but something, something's got to happen.
Dale, and, and we get a lot, we get a lot of feedback on the hospital authority and a lot of people equate the hospital authority with Lake Shore Hospital and want to know when the hospital's going to come back. And, you know, for somebody who lives in this world every day, you know, you're only going to get what the market can bear. And obviously, you know, the market, that hospital could not be financially successful. But I, I can tell you, and COVID aside, because COVID's made everything crazy and where ERs are on bypass every day and we, we have challenges every day. I go to work getting patients. It's calmed down this week, but in the weeks past, getting patients where I need to go. But pre-COVID even, you know, this town, one ER is not enough for this town. So for the life of me, I don't understand why the standalone ER concept from some of these providers doesn't work. I understand it probably wouldn't work at the Lake Shore Hospital site. They would, they would, they would want to build probably a, a new place, maybe somewhere on the interstate. But for the life of me, I don't understand, because I know that market's there. And 80% of what we, we, we transport in from the EMS side, so I, I would think it would come from the, from the walk-ins too, or treating street, meaning they leave the ER that day. You know, and if they get, for the ones that get admitted, it's okay to put them in an ambulance and take them to Gainesville where they have, they have beds. That, that need may not be, we, we may not have the need for two hospitals, hospital beds, but I can tell you the ER need is critical, and it was critical before COVID, and COVID's made it even worse. So, I mean, maybe some of those funds could be used to hang out there as an incentive for somebody to at least come do the standalone ER concept.
I, I did not verify this, but I asked what a standalone ER, very similar to those you see in Gainesville, costs. There was a range, but if you look at the bottom side of that range, $35 million. And I can assure you that I asked more than one provider, what about a standalone ER? What if we build a brand-new building? What would you do in terms of coming and operating it? And we got no takers.
Dale, under the, the previous operator, you said they were losing about $8 million a year.
Yes, sir.
Did you all audit their books to make, to verify that they, because there was speculation that mismanagement had a lot to do with the $8 million they were losing a year?
Yes. Of course, we, we heard plenty of that too, Commissioner. Audit, no. Did we examine the books? To the extent they had the filings with ACHA, we did. Please understand, CHS never turned over their full set of books. So we were reviewing the filings with ACHA. But, you know, I mean, they continued to pay themselves like an administrative fee, which basically is they're raking money out and sending it to the home office, things of that nature. Those things were definitely in there. And those are things that you could probably question, but at the end of the day, I don't know how you're going to make up $8 million.
Well, my, my biggest concern of, of the Lake Shore Hospital Authority staying whole, because you all meet a part of what the statute says that we must do.
Right.
You know, indigent care responsibility to this board here. And if, if Lake Shore no longer exists, then there's going to be some kind of legislation done in order for us to capture part of that milit rate that you all have just to pay for indigent care. We can't afford to pay for indigent care out of our budget as our budget is structured. Now, we just don't have that, that much money to do that with. So those three mills that is, is allotted to Lake Shore Hospital would, would have to, something would have to happen for, for us to be able to use that part of the old milit rate just to pay for the indigent care for going to be got.
Well, back when it was fully leased, and of course, the numbers were down on the number of clients, so if they went up, this would not hold true. But it was almost as if without the millage, it was a break-even proposition. You were generating about as much off of the leases as the total expenditures were. Now, again, if the numbers were to go up in terms of the amount of care that we were having to pay for, that would not have held. But at least in the latter part of the relationship with CHS, the leases were paying the lion's share. Now, we still had to budget the revenue equal to one and a half mills because that was required of the lease, but then at the end of the year, you hadn't spent it. So basically, it went into the reserve. And that's basically why you have that, plus the prepaid lease is why you have the 23 million.
Mr. Chair. I'll move with Grant, Mr. Williams' request on behalf of Lake Shore Hospital Authority to move forward with asking a, a judge to put them in receivership.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, we really need to rescind our motion.
Yeah.
And vote until we have public input.
I agree, yeah.
He, he lets his hair in.
Yes.
You got your hair.
You want to go ahead and authorize the clerk to rescind?
We'll, we'll hold up, we'll rescind that. Can we hear the votes?
We rescinding our motion and vote. Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Limbly.
My name is Barbara Limbly. I've been attending the Lake Shore Hospital Authority Board meetings for over 10 years. And my thoughts is regardless of the outcome, the Lake Shore Hospital Authority Board needs to be dissolved. The hospital had a decline in patients. It was maybe a 90-bed hospital. On the average, for the last couple of years, there was about 35 patients in a hospital. When CHS took over, they thought they might be able to make money with the OB unit. But it turns out, most of the OB patients were Medicaid. If someone had money, they didn't go to Lake Shore to have their child. You know, the government picked up the tab, you know, and they couldn't make it on that. Stephen Douglas, one of the board members, called the building a dinosaur. You know, he's in construction and it would cost millions and millions of dollars to bring it up to standard. And the authority does not need to subsidize anybody to operate the hospital. It's a losing proposition. And regardless of the outcome, if you guys decide to turn it over to receivership, the money that the authority has should not go just into the county budget. It should be designated for indigent care until the funds are gone. Not every county subsidizes indigent care like we do. Some counties do a sales tax. But the bottom line is, the authority just needs to go away. And people think there is a need for, you know, ER, you know, let the capitalists build a standalone ER. But the, as Mr. Williams said, the authority was responsible for indigent care and building an ER, building is not for indigent care. And backtracking back into the eighties, the reason the authority started leasing the hospital operation out, they were losing, not losing money, but they didn't want to have to increase the millage rate for the taxpayers of Columbia County, because when it was a public hospital, anybody could come. And I don't know if there were agreements that other counties paid, if someone came from Union County or Hamilton County or Swanee County, I don't know if they paid, but it was a losing proposition.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Limbly. I, I think it's like Mr. Williams said, this is uncharted territory. We just have to see where this goes. Oh, Stu, you got something to say? Come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. I won't take any much more time than Ms. Limbly took. This just came out on Monday. I spoke to two authority board members, couldn't get ahold of the third. Stephen Douglas was MIA. Both of them were unaware or didn't, didn't, didn't remember the hospital authority manager, Mr. Williams, speaking to the board of this issue. Yet it says here in this letter, through discussions among county and Lake Shore Hospital Authority representatives, that's the board, they don't remember you talking to them about that at all. That's the first thing. The second thing is, this is not such an emergency, because this has been going on for a year. So this didn't just happen last night. Everybody's known about it. The problem happened when Dr. Thompson resigned from the authority. At that point in time, the authority board did not make, meet the legislative requirement of the legislation that it was enacted under. There is no legally constituted board, and that happened when Dr. Thompson left. So I respectfully tell you folks that there will never be a legally constituted board unless somebody takes over the hospital, because the charter of the hospital or the legislation, accession laws, which, which established the hospital, says one member of that board has to reside in Columbia County, has to be on the staff of Lake Shore Hospital. And as soon as there's no Lake Shore Hospital, there's no Lake Shore Hospital Authority Board, and there's no Lake Shore Hospital Authority. I would respectfully request that this money, because you guys are spending the money before you even have it, that this money be put under the, under the, under the control of the clerk of the courts who controls all the money until the legislature figures out what they're going to do. To do anything is, is irresponsible, and I certainly would oppose this in court. And I don't know if Mr. Swisher has had a chance to look at this legislation, but clearly he should be heard from.
Thanks.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Williams, would you like to respond to that?
What is this, what, do I get a chance to respond to you?
Mr. Williams is on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, not here to argue. Simply put, we do not have a quorum. We cannot conduct business. If we shut down October 1st, we don't attempt to do anything, there are a significant amount of assets owned by this public which simply sit in limbo. I'm not going to be responsible, no more than anybody else, for $23 million sitting out in a checking account and nobody's even reconciling the doggone bank statement. So regardless of what has been said and what people's opinions are, I cannot help but to believe that it is in the best interest of the public, which is what every law written is supposed to be in behalf of, to have an elected, responsible sitting board manage those assets in a way that the court allows until such time the authority receives a member or it is decertified. I just simply do not believe that it is in good public policy in any shape, form, or fashion to do nothing.
Thank you. Joe, do you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I wanted to offer a couple of assurances. The, the nature of receivership proceeding...
The nature of receivership proceedings, the county's not going to receive any of the assets of the authority. They're going to be subjected to a receivership. The only thing the Board of County Commissioners is going to do is sit in the shoes of the LSHA, Lake Shore Hospital Authority trustees, such that when there's something that needs to be done, a lease signed, something negotiated, some kind of a decision be made, that would be brought to the Board of County Commissioners as receiver, as a court-appointed receiver. That decision would then be reported back to the court and the court would sign an order authorizing whatever action you take. So, you've got two layers of protection. And yet, these assets cannot be commingled. That's the nature of receivership. They have to be held apart. So, I don't want there to be any concern or any thoughts on the part of the board that, you know, you're coming into $23 million. You're not. It's still going to be the authority's money. What Mr. Williams was referring to and what I referred to in the memo is when the legislature has dissolved hospital authorities in the last five or six years, they've reverted all assets of the authority to the Board of County Commissioners. And so, the stewardship angle on this is if these assets may be coming to you in the next eight months to two years, you need to take care of them. There needs to be somebody to take care of them, make sure they're not wasted, including the buildings and the money that's held by the authority. So, that's all you're really doing. You're just being a caretaker. It's not being dissolved by this and you're not folding it into the county by this. And this is all, of course, subject to the court allowing it. We're going to petition and ask a court to allow us to do this. This is untread ground. We don't know what the judge is going to do.
Mr. Chairman, I again move that we take the request of Lake Shore Hospital Authority and ask the court to put them in receivership.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we've got a lot of people here in the room about Columbia Youth Football Association. We're going to take a few minutes and discuss this. And, you know, I just want to say what happened last weekend really crossed the line in my book. So, here's the facts of what happened. On September 1st, at a budget meeting with department heads with the county, it was brought up that there were structural deficiencies at Memorial Stadium, at which management, at that time, advised the employee that the people bringing up the structural integrities were not qualified to basically be a structural engineer. They would have to have an engineer assess that. And the county would provide an engineer or they could piggyback off the county for an engineer, but it would have to be paid for by the city. That's fact. Nothing else was ever mentioned from that meeting until September 10th. That's a fact. On the eve of the jamboree, September 10th, Jeff Tyer was told he could not use Memorial Stadium for the football jamboree on Saturday. At that time, Jeff requested, well, what about the field? If the stadium, if the seats are not safe, why can't we use the field? Jeff Tyer was told no. He would have to find a new venue to hold the jamboree. At that time, Mr. Tyer reaches out to the county to help find another option throughout afternoon of Friday, September 10th, the day before scheduled games. The question was asked if the Columbia High School field could be used. County was denied. The answer was no. That's a fact. The question was asked, could the old boys' club fields be used, which they practice on at this time? And the county responded, yes, we can use those fields, but we don't know if we can have them ready by Saturday. So, Mr. Tyer was forced to cancel the games for Saturday, September 11th, and postpone until fields could be ready, which county staff started Monday morning, first thing daylight, started working on the fields. The fields are ready for play at this time. And that's for September 8th games. City reached out late Friday night after decision was made to cancel and said it is okay to use the fields but not bleachers. Decision was too late to let all the players and parents know. That's a fact. Decision was made about 8:00 that night. Now, I will tell you too, the field was strike ready to play Friday before this decision was ever made by the city. So, how it got made at such a late point, I don't know. But the county gets the fields ready and are willing to have the games at the old boys' club on Lake Jeffrey. That's a fact. And that is the timeline as far as we know it at this time. Now, I know Friday afternoon, I started getting calls about 3:00 from several upset parents, and I don't blame them. They just had, the Saturday before and throughout that week, they were at Memorial Stadium during their draft and all the other, you know, things they do to get the teams ready. Nothing was mentioned at that time as far as structural integrity at the stadium. So, you know, that's where I'm at with this thing. To me, when you start using kids to try to, I don't know. But, you know, it seems like something was done here that wasn't right and the kids are the ones who suffered in this. And when you do that to kids, you've crossed the line in my book. And I've instructed David that I want to make sure this never happens again and that Columbia County has a place for these kids to play. So, at that time, I'll ask. Anybody else got anything to add?
Well, I can tell you that as part of this, there was a lot of social media conversation about Animatics Park and why we weren't using Animatics Park and a lot of questioning. The county didn't want to use Animatics Park and we should move the games to Animatics Park. And I responded that the county commission is not the decision maker on where the games are played. That is up to Columbia Youth Football and their board, who those parents elect. But the county is in the business of providing facilities for recreation, and we do that. And Animatics Park is one of those facilities we provide. I think in the last three years, I've said on this board, we provided $200,000 for upgrades in Animatics Park. I think just a few months ago, when unsafe playground equipment was brought to our attention, this board put another $80,000 in there because we don't make kids wait. This board doesn't do that. We don't use kids at the Palm. And so, to say this board doesn't support Animatics Park, I think you can't say that based on our actions. Now, I do have a problem with the Animatics Board seemingly being complicit and some of their members working to sabotage youth football. I think there are emails out there, and I think if you follow the social media trail, I believe 100% that's what happened. And it don't sit well with me. And it really doesn't sit well with me that here's a board that's going to continue to ask us for money if their members are complicit in a board member doing that. It also came to my attention on Monday of this week that their board has a sex offender. And me, as a public official who knows that, as soon as I heard that, I called David Kraus and told him, we should send him a letter that this county cannot condone any activity out there that involves kids with that going on. So, I support funding the park. I will continue to fund the park. But I think the Animatics Board may need to get their house in order before they come back and ask the taxpayers for more money. And when we gave the money to Animatics Park in the past, it was, we thought it was owned by the city. It's now come to light, it's a totally private board. And I don't think it's impossible to fund, to continue to fund them because I think Animatics is a good cause. But I think that also creates more concerns that this board is going to have to deal with in the future. But I'm going to tell you this, if the members of Animatics Board were complicit in the behavior to sabotage the games, and we know it happened, we have some emails that it happened. And I think, you know, we had a city official resign as a result of it. If they were complicit in that and they continue to allow those members to sit on that board, I'm going to have to think twice before I give them any more money.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I get, for some reason, I get drugged. First of all, I don't deal with social media. I don't know how to put nothing on social media and this and that, but I get drugged in the things that I have no part of. But as I said at the city meeting, I'm man enough to stand in my own boots. I'm going to go back in history. Nobody can question my commitment to youth sports in Columbia County. I coached little league football for 35 years. That was for a lot of y'all was born. We didn't even have a field to play on. We played at the prison. They had a softball field over at the prison. And they let us play at the prison there on Lake Jeffrey. Our first football game was at the prison. From there to the boys' club, from the boys' club on Lake Jeffrey, from the boys' club over on Washington Street, and then I went to the city and participated in the city league. But what's important, there's a lot of innuendos that's just not true. Here, and I don't know exactly when, it had to be a month prior to the season beginning, there was some friction between the board members and Jeff Tyer. We had a meeting at Richardson Community Center, and I thought everything had ironed itself out. I leave the meeting on Friday night, Thursday night. I go to the gulf fishing. I get back home and I said, my God, all hell done broke loose about what? And they said, about football. Now, I do know this. The city manager asked me 10 years ago, would the county take Memorial Stadium? I said, I don't know about Memorial Stadium yet. Tim Murphy, right there, went and inspected the station for the city manager. And Tim did some work on the stadium. And Tim told me that the stadium, the city manager asked him, was it going to fall? And I guess by Tim not being a structure engineer, he couldn't tell him whether seats would fall down or not. But I knew before the county would take that stadium over to keep this kind of situation from happening, that we own it when the city made the move to get out of recreation, you know, sense of speaking. Now, that night at Richardson, there was a big free fall between Jeff Tyer and Sylvester. I don't get into personal business. So, all I know, I had to get in between the two. So, I think this go deeper than what a lot of y'all know it go to. Now, as far as sabotaging it, I don't know anything about any sabotaging that happened. But I do know this, on August 24th, at 10:45, Mario Carpet, one thing that Mario does, any meeting he have, he take notes. And his notes, his minutes right here says that he met with Ms. Amy Field, giving her the upcoming CYFA 2021 football season for the city of Lake City and the county youth of Lake City. In that presentation, other facilities are at Memorial Stadium. The facilities are at Memorial Stadium and Animatics North. Mario informed Mrs. Field that the football draft is on Thursday, the 26th, and we need to use Memorial Stadium for the draft. Mr. Carpet also gave Mrs. Field a list of field prep dates. Memorial Stadium, September 8, 15, 27, October 11, November 8, 15. Lawn mowing, restroom clean, and litter remover after the game. Animatics, September 15 to 27, the 11th to 25th, November 8 to 15. Same identical thing. Lawn mowing, restroom clean, and litter pickup. Mr. Carpet stated that CYFA serve youth five ages to 13 years old. In 2021, we have 16 youth teams, the three divisions, a bantam, six to seven, junior midgets from eight to 10, midgets from 11 to 13 years old for a total of 300 kids. Mrs. Field was ecstatic with the youth recreation and was collaborating with possibly the county to make, for the makings of a successful season. We will line and mark the football field, maintain the grass, clean the restroom, and pick up trash. She asked about girls' sports at Richardson Community Center, and Mr. Carpet said that the sports are co-ed and attendants are mostly male. Children's are very popular CYFA football season and girls participate. She also said that by the park being a private park, that she would have to get approval from her city council to inform them of what she wanted, recommended by Mr. Carpet to do. So, I don't know what happened between the 24th and Friday night that passed. I just don't know what happened. I do know this, that, and I told Jeff this when we met. There have been a very, by some, not all, some that do not want to come in the black community and play football. Give you example. We was playing over there, no, Ms. Hill, I'm going to tell you what was said. Point blank. When I was coaching, we were playing in Animatics. We had this prominent white man go to Haver Christian and say, why you got us in Nigger Town playing football?
Mr. Williams.
No?
Mr. Williams.
No, 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 no.
I'm the chairman of this committee.
No, no.
And I'm not going to make it some black and white issue.
I'm going to say, no, no. I'm going to say what I got to say, and you can't stop me from saying.
I'm telling you right now, I'm the chairman.
We, and we don't need that. We are a community and we must live together. We must play together. We must pray together. But you cannot hide what was said. It was said. And that is not right. We are all God children. We all.
Mr. Williams, this is my.
We are all God children and we should say, no, you don't tell me.
I'm telling you, I'm the chairman of this committee. That's enough.
No, you don't either. You can't throw me out either. I'm going to say what I got to say. We are all God children and we got to work together. We got to live together and we got to pray together. That's what we got to do. Nobody trying to make it black and white, but you cannot put lipstick on a pig. I don't care how you dress it up. It's a pig. So, we got to forget, we got to forget about race and we got to forget about this and that. We just got to work together and come together as a community. That is what we got to do. We don't do any of us any good by fighting against one another, jugging at one another. We got to work together as a community. When we're out trying to recruit jobs and all to Columbia County, we get asked questions about the race relationship in the county, about housing in the county, about the schools in the county, about the quality of life in the county. Those are all the questions that are asked. So, we can't be fighting one another. We got to work together. We got to pray together. We got to stay together. That's just who we are in Columbia County. We are one people and we need to be one people. And we shouldn't let one or two people make us fight one another.
Mr. Chairman.
It just shouldn't happen.
Mr. Chairman, I totally believe in... believe in 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 Mr. Mr. Williams' recollection that that comment may have been made sometime in the past, but in 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 today's time and in the future, in in the interest of what's going on today, why don't we let Mr. Tyre, because Mr. Tyre is the president of youth football, come up here and state the real reasons and the real situation, because it was his decision. He made it with the input of all the parents and kids that pay money to play youth football and elect him to be their president, and there's all kind of innuendos about we don't want to play, they don't want to play there because of this, and they don't want to play there because of that. Why don't we let Mr. Tyre get up here and tell us the reasons?
Mr. Tyre, come up this time, please. And while you're coming up, I would just like to say, I don't see this as a black and white issue. I see this as a money issue.
It's never been a black and white issue. So now we're gonna get, you can call it my version, but I can tell you exactly what happened. I've got witnesses to most of it. So approximately four or five weeks ago, like Commissioner Williams said, I called a meeting based on Agents of Equality and Sylvester Warren um choosing to call out a man named Mario Copick, who has done nothing but been a wonderful public servant, uh has dedicated his time, his own money, not only for football, for basketball, for summer programs, to pay for a kid to go on a trip with a summer program that they couldn't afford. You know, none of us are perfect. Nobody's ever claimed anybody's perfect, but when it comes to how kids are taken care of in this county, I've really never seen an issue I could fault Mario Copick over. But again, we put it out there, Mario Copick. Why do you not want to play games in Annie Maddox? So let me back up and go a little further. So we have a pamphlet, an advertisement every year about signups for Little League Football, you know? Signups will be on these Saturdays, whatever the dates are. Blah, 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 blah. At the very bottom of it, in very small print, it says, all games will be played at Memorial Stadium. Typographical error, whatever you want to call it. It's been on there for twenty years. We've been playing games at Annie Maddox Park for the last fourteen years. It's never been an issue. It's never been discussed, even this year, but then when that pamphlet come out, Commissioner Williams chose to go to Mario Copick, who was sitting in his office with two of his employees, and make the statement, oh, we're not playing at Annie Maddox Park. I don't like it. There ain't no games scheduled on here. Now, first of all, we don't even have a schedule. We have no idea how many teams, how many.
That's not why I'm, Mr. Williams.
I'm talking now.
Well, that, we, we.
Thank you. Thank you. When I, when I, oh, I'm telling the truth. You just told yours, so I'm gonna tell mine.
Okay, you do that.
You can spin it any way you want to, Commissioner. So he did that. I even questioned the two employees that were there. Did Mario make the statement, we're not gonna play any games at Annie Maddox? No, sir. I said, okay. So the next day, Mario tells me that Mr. Warren goes down there and visits with him and asks the same thing about games at Annie Maddox Park, at which time, again, this is Mario's words.
Yes, I'm sorry. If you would address us.
Yeah. Mario's words were, to me, and how the conversation went, Sylvester, I don't know if we're gonna play games at Annie Maddox Park. I've got to talk to Miss Fields to see what kind of assistance we can get from the city. The assistance being lining the field, setting out the equipment, you know, all the things that go into playing a football game there. On or about that times, when Mr. Warren and the Agents of Equality Facebook page decided to try to crucify the man in court of public opinion, I read pretty much all the comments. Other than my mom and dad and my grandparents, and probably some football coaches along the way, there's probably not been a bigger mentor in my life, especially as an adult, more so than Mario Copick. I've learned more about race, race relations, uh why some people see things this that, this way versus that way, and, you know, how to be the bigger man and try to walk away, and, you know, I've learned a lot from it. So, of course, it offended me greatly to see that man uh talked about like that, again, by people that want to divide our community. So I called the meeting. I invited Commissioner Williams. I invited Commissioner Hollinsworth to be an observer, as we were not discussing county business, so we didn't violate any sunshine laws or anything like that. Uh invited some other athletes, coaches, different people in the community that are well respected. Because I just wanted it to be clarified that, number one, we're a group of volunteers. Nobody in our organization makes not one nickel, one way, shape, form, or fashion. You know, I've been tied to this league now for probably twenty-five years. A lot of it as a coach, a lot of it as the president, um. But again, without the volunteers and people like myself, but mainly our coaches, you know, multiple people here that have coached in our league, um our kids don't get to play football if that doesn't happen. That being said, we had the meeting. I did agree to sit down and talk with the president, and I'm not gonna get into names or anything, because that's kind of how other people like to do it, but uh so I talked to the president, and we agreed that we would sit down and talk about. One of the issues I had was when we play at Annie Maddox Park, our revenues decrease, meaning we don't get near as many people in the gate or the stands. Uh it costs us approximately three hundred and sixty-some-odd dollars a game to put on a game by the time we pay officials. I even made the statement that night, you pay all the expenses, we'll play some games over there. But I can't go over there and be stewards of the money we raised and our volunteers raised and the money this board has gave us and go over and lose it carte blanche, because what this really boils down to, because it was pretty much stated, so they could sell concessions out of that quarter-million-dollar concession stand and bathrooms y'all built over there. I don't have a problem with you building them over there. But me, as a private entity, which we are, the Columbia Youth Football Association and a charitable organization, I'm not beholden to anybody to play anywhere, for whatever reason. I'm only beholden to the kids in our league, the coaches in our league, and their safety and all those things. So we agree to that. Grover and I are gonna, gonna talk. Later on that night, as I leave the meeting, I get several phone calls from multiple people discussing just what Commissioner Wit said earlier about the history of being a uh sex offender. To that date and that time, I had zero knowledge of anything along those lines. And uh, you know, and me as a man and as the head of the Columbia Youth Football Association, it kind of put me in a moral dilemma. You know, I don't know what somebody with that charge can and can't do, or any of those things. So, number one, I went and verified that what I was told was true. And I did. I verified it. I looked it up on the F D L E uh website, and it's right there, plain as day. I made some phone calls from two different law and agencies, just trying to figure out what the limitations are on somebody with that charge. And probably the closest thing I got for somebody to actually tell me, because I guess every instance is different. I don't know. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a criminal attorney or a defense attorney or any of those things, was all I can tell you is if somebody is a sex offender or sexual predator by charge, and they go to one of our Columbia County schools to be able to come on campus, I know when I go to see my kid, I gotta give them my driver's license. They run it through the little thing. They make you the little name tag so you can go see your kid or go to the lunchroom or whatever you're doing. If you come back, I mean, I guess that system notifies them of said charge. You won't leave that office without either direct escort by a school resource officer, and if they're not available, an administrator the entire time you were at that school until you get back to your vehicle and leave the premises. So that tells me somebody takes it pretty serious around children. By the same token, I didn't feel like it was my job as a man or a private citizen or the head of our league, although, you know, I've been called about a thousand names, and, you know, I'm a racist, I'm a, you know, I've had the, nobody would say the word, but it placed the N-word, and they wrote it. They didn't say Jeff Tyre said it, but the way they wrote it kind of appears Jeff Tyre said it. I don't doubt that there's people in this world that use that word. I know the instance that Mr. uh Commissioner Williams is talking about. I could tell you the man's name. It was fifteen years ago, though. Fifteen years ago. You think about what all's evolved in fifteen years. As far as I know, there's not been any, you know, I'm not ignorant enough to believe that there's not some discrimination in this world. But I can promise you, number one, it has never come from me, the CYFA, or our board. We don't care what color a kid is. They could be black, white, green, yellow, orange. We don't care about their sexuality. We don't care about anything. They meet the age and weight requirements, and they want to play football in this county, and that's what we raise money and work hard to do, is have people to help mentor them and coach them if that's what they want to do. Other than that, we don't have any use of being in politics whatsoever. There's people, I'm sure, within our organization, our coaches, our board, that I'm sure we have differing political opinions on some issues, whatever that is, but you know what? They never come up, because that's, that's not what we're there to do. We're there to provide children the opportunity to play football in this county if they want to. That's all we care about, plain and simple. But when you tell me, also that night, prior to my knowledge of this offense, that, man, I'll be at every game. I'm gonna make sure all the kids behave, and the people on the sidewalk are doing the right thing, and because that was one of our issues, a lot of people parking on the sidewalk and uh not paying to come in, because it's only about fifteen yards. Uh they could just sit there and watch the game at their car and do whatever they did. I had, you know, complaints of, you know, and I'm not saying everybody on the sidewalk was bad. I don't know, but I've had complaints of people telling me that people hollering and cussing and whatever, and people, you know, somebody put on there last night, Jeff Tyre cusses and his cussed kids playing football. Well, guess what, folks? I've done that. I'm not gonna sit here and lie to you or tell you anything different, and I played the game, and I can promise you what little bit might slip out, and I tell the kids before we ever start, coach might accidentally say a bad word. But when I played, there was a lot of bad words. We was called, we was everything but a child of God every day. And we got it from black coaches, white coaches, every coach, didn't matter. Again, not saying that's right, but that's a whole lot different than being called a racist. It's pretty uncomfortable as a white guy who my daughter's right here. Three of our best friends, I shouldn't even have to say this, are black girls. Well, actually, Haley's mixed, Haley Lake, uh Ivana Randolph. I don't want to have to call them by, I'm sorry, hun. But these are people that come to my house, spend the night at my house, eat at my table, go on vacation with me. Kind of hard to call me a racist in that. I I'm trying, but I'm, really, I'm kind of pissed. I will wrap it up, but I can tell you, what was done to us last week was wrong. Again, I can't prove who called whoever about anything about had to do with that stadium, who manipulated Amy Fields into losing their job, losing her job, to somehow perpetuate this. I mean, I was told names, uh one gentleman's videoing me very well over there, and that was one of them, and of course Sylvester. I don't know if they called or did anything. I mean, I'm not the American League of Cities, because apparently nobody called anybody, because nobody's ever found a record of an insurance company saying anything about anything. So that's a whole nother deal. Bottom line is, we're gonna play football. We're gonna play our jamboree this Saturday. We're probably gonna end up playing the rest of the season at Memorial Stadium, assuming the structural engineering comes back, you know, safe. I want to thank the board for stepping up in this instance. Mr. Kirby, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Pittman, for making sure that we have a place to play this weekend. To all the people in the community that have donated money and buildings and whatever we had to do to try to make all this come to pass. Thank you to my coaches, players. I mean, I saw some kids here earlier. Uh thank you to my wife, who's had, and family who have had to deal with the anxiety and fear and all that from some of the stuff spoke on social media. I'm sorry y'all had to go through that. But regardless, any of that, I agree. We gonna play together, pray together. I've been coaching black with kids, white kids, any kid for years, no different than you did. And um we say the Lord's Prayer at the end of every practice. We win together, we lose together. I teach them how important it is to respect and love the man next to you, how to be held accountable, how to hold somebody accountable. Nobody wants to be the guy that let everybody else down by either poor behavior or a bad instance, you know? We want to do the right thing. And um that's all we're about, mentoring people, doing the right thing. And hopefully, you know, we've made some really good football players in this county, but I hope more importantly, we made some really good men and even a couple of girls. I know there's been a couple of girls playing in the league. So uh, but hopefully, we made better people. That's our goal. End of the day, that's what we're there to do. Thank y'all.
Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, the only thing I want to say, you hit, you hit the nail on the head on everything.
Oh, I can't hear you, sir.
I said, you hit the nail on the head on everything in that meeting, but you just had one thing wrong. And I was trying to tell you, when I went to Mario, I asked Mario, are there any games gonna be played at Anamata? And he said, I can't tell you that. I turned around and walked out the door.
Okay, well, he said he couldn't tell you that, but nobody ever said no, because remember that night in that meeting, and I think, like I said, Commissioner Hollinsworth was there, and uh Mr. Morgan in the back of the room, he was there, but uh we said that night when it was brought up, oh, they said, no, we're not gonna play any games, and that's because it was brought up that me and somebody voted against Mario, and the person they said that me and that person were that voted against him is not even on our board, so, I mean, there's never been a vote, a discussion, a discussion of a vote or anything to do with Annie Maddox until Mario Copick was called out on Facebook.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robbie, you got, Robbie, you want, you got a total of just minutes of that, Robbie. I I know I I've been mission, just take thirty seconds. I know that I've been men- mentioned that I was at that meeting, and I'm glad I was, because at the meeting, I even talked to 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 him outside. I I didn't know a lot about CYFA. I didn't know how it was governed, how it wasn't. I know that we don't have any business telling uh Jeff what he can do and what he can't do. But I was at the meeting, and and at first, I I don't think there was any problem with playing at Annie Maddox. I never heard Jeff one time say that he wouldn't play at Annie Maddox, and just like the commissioner just said, Mario never said he wouldn't play at Annie Maddox. And I heard the same thing that Jeff did. I was the same as Jeff. I didn't know there was a person that had a pass there, and um he said that he was gonna be a hands-on board member. He was gonna make sure that, you know, that things went well, and I understood what he was saying. Make make sure kids don't act up, make sure people were off the sidewalk. I can't remember all the exact words, but I know that he was gonna be active. And it was impressive that he said that, you know, I said, well, they're gonna make sure, uh you know, everything goes good. And um neither one of me or Mr. Tyre knew that. And and I hope it can be worked out in the future. I think, I think, you know, when you jump out there and you 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 jumble something, that you you gotta negotiate, and I know that one of the biggest problems was you wanted your your four hundred dollars, your three hundred and sixty dollars, and I did hear in that meeting they weren't, weren't gonna do that, and and you have to be fiscally respons- fiscally responsible, because people help, you know, fund you. So so you have to be responsible, so so and I believe that the 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 real issue that really shut uh Jeff down was the sexual offender situation. I I think that forced him to not play him at Annie Maddox, and maybe that can be corrected. Maybe, maybe they can come to a conclusion that way sometime. But but I do not, I I do not think that that Jeff ever said he wasn't gonna play him, and I don't think he has any, any, any prejudice before to to pay playing one there. He's played him for years. They've played him for years there. So so and I've had people say, they're good games, you know? So so I don't think that uh Jeff had any animosity in this situation, from what I can tell from the meetings. Maybe something, you know, I don't know about, but 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 I was there, and and what Jeff said about that meeting is 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 accurate, and I was there watching it. And I was there watching it. That's all I got to say.
Well, Mr. Hollinsworth.
Hold on, hold on, Commissioner Murphy wants to speak for you.
I mean, you told me I can speak after Mr. Hollinsworth.
I got the floor. The uh.
Take it.
I just want to make a, a point. Uh, I've, I've sitting here and listened to a lot of facts and a lot of figures and I'm fixing to give you a pile of damn facts. Number one, City Lake City did not hire me to do a structural analysis in that facility. They hired me to fix the rust eight years ago in the bottom of that thing and replace it with aluminum, aluminum decking that's sitting there to this day. As we tore it apart, fact, I called Wendell Johnson and Thomas Henry over there. Cause we observed some rusted beams there, brought it to their attention, what I think as a contractor I should have done. We sat there and looked at it, they couldn't, Wendell Johnson's exact statements were, Tim, we don't have that kind of money in the budget to fix this. I can't remember what the figure was, but who, whatever. But Wendell Johnson asked me out of his mouth, people want to know Wendell Johnson, he says the manager at that time. Tim, in your opinion, not to hold you liable, this is exactly what I told Mr. Williams the other day. And uh, and everybody else, you know, what Ron said down there wasn't incorrect. What Ron said was, what you said was not incorrect. But they did, I just want to clarify, they did not hire me for that purpose. I was there to correct the problem, I did when I exposed it where no structural engineer in the earth can see the issue that I seen. But I'm not gonna get into detail there. What I am gonna get into detail is simply this. Wendell Johnson asked me, Tim, in your opinion, not to hold you liable, is this stadium gonna fall? Hell, no, I think was my exact words. It's physically impossible for it to do so. So, long story short, he, maybe Thomas, whatever, they put it back together and it sits that way to this day. And for another point, for a fact, if I was so damn worried about that stadium falling, I'd probably sat my butt in them stadium steps a hundred times since that day with my family and my grandchildren. Me and Rocky sat in there last year watching our, our grandchildren play. So, that was never an issue. Fact, yes, it was put on social media that Tim Murphy is aware of all these structural issues. That's BS is what that is, ain't a fact, it's BS with a fact. So, what I am gonna tell you here, cause I got the calls at three o'clock, when I didn't have a damn clue what the heck was going on about football at that point. It started unraveling and it don't take real long for an old boy over there on River Street to start putting the facts together. I started lining them up real quick. Called Paul Dow, Paul Dow said, call this one, boom, call this. I got, I've done special, I've done public records requests, I know the culprits in this crap. But I can tell you this for a fact, as long as I, not as a commissioner, but as long as I live in Columbia County, what happened Friday damn well ain't gonna happen again, I'll promise you that. Cause if it means me taking them all down, I'll take them all down. Everybody in this room that's guilty of it knows dang good and well what I know and what pretty much every commissioner on this board knows. That ain't gonna, we, we, we put the kids in Columbia County, we use them as a stepping pond because people got different opinions. That's bull crap. That's just fact. Me and Danny Witt sat, he sit back here somewhere, is in there, his dad, we spent numerous hours at that place. These volunteers as Jeff Tyre and all these other people that Buster, but I, I was in baseball for twenty something years. Uh, Clint Pittman started, when we give it to the county, Clint can tell you stories that I probably don't even remember. But my point is simply this, guys and ladies. Columbia County was held hostage and they thought we was gonna cave and we did. We fixed and played football at Lake Jeffrey. And you know, and in my area, it ain't dang right in. I got a grand youngin' sitting down there at Lake Weir right now, that my son planned his vacation around the damn Jamborito supposed to happen last Saturday. Well, they're down there now, he ain't playing the Jamboree. That's personal. He's down there having a big time, we gonna get through it. But there were some little old youngins, girls and boys last week, I'll promise you. It upset their whole world because a few chosen adults and one that lost their job, you know, decided to play politics over a youngin's well-being. If it wasn't for that damn football field and that baseball field over there, I'd probably be sitting way the hell over there in Rife right now. That's a fact. So, and as I went and did my investigation on this stuff this week, what I can tell you, I was made aware of this predator issue, you know, just here in the last day or so. If uh, whoever that gentleman is, I can't, if he walked in that door, if he's here right now, I can't tell you who he is. So, it's really irrelevant to me to that fact. I understand exactly what Mr. Tyre said. But what I did learn in this, in the Tim Murphy investigation, I've sat here, I've got it right here on this computer, I've got both contracts with Richardson Community Center slash Recreation. And I've also got the contract that the city entered into in two thousand eight, what we did in sixteen when I first, just prior to me coming on the board. But what I do know, I'm not gonna rest into it is, staff, if at the end of this discussion, I will be making a motion for staff to bring the licensing agreement to this board. And I would ask that you as staff would schedule meetings next week to get the input of every single commissioner. Because what's in that contract, Tim Murphy and the Columbia County citizens can't live with that no more, ain't gonna happen. I put, I voted to put hundreds of thousands of dollars in Annie Maddox, as well as I have other parks around this county. And I will continue to do that because I get, just like Jeff Tyre said, me and Glenn, Glenn recruited me years ago in this baseball doing stuff. I did it because somebody did it for me, the Gerald Barses, the, you know, all, all, all them people that poured out their time and their money all them years to keep Tim Murphy out of prison, that's fact. But. Board, I would ask y'all to support me at the end of this discussion. Because, and Mr. Kraus, Joel, whoever the powers that be need to be, I'm asking, I'll put it in my motion, I want that contract, a revised contract to come to this board for discussion and a vote at the next board meeting. I'm, I'm tired of kicking this stuff down the road. And uh, uh, I've got numerous friends that live within dang near spitting distance of Annie Maddox. I want to make sure that the people that live in that community has got just, that they need a safe haven to be able to go out there and protect their children. And, and we live in a hell of a world right now. You live, I don't care where you live, you gonna have stupidity. And that's what happens, all these people running around town shooting, doing this, there's just a bunch of stupid people, white and black thugs, that's fact. But I, I'm, I'm done with this crap, you know? And, and as y'all can tell, I'm not one that speaks in the public a whole lot and I don't hold back the craps and the dams, but that's just me. So, but my point is simply this, it's a fact. The kids of Columbia County are never gonna be in a situation like this again over my damn dead body. I'll promise you that. And I don't care who's in my way, I'll run you over, that's a promise, that's fact. So, Chair, you can go on do how you need to.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Man, I behaved pretty nicely, I hadn't interrupted, I've been extremely patient. I'm glad you guys are wrapped up.
Did you address that to me? I, I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I said I've been patient, I didn't interrupt, I think that I've behaved pretty well at the podium is what I said. Um, not on getting back and forth with each other. So, Chairman, uh, Commissioners, first thing I want to say, Mr. Hollinsworth, it's very impossible to speak to the mind of Jeff. So, from, just from a straight psychological, psychological standpoint. What I will say is that I find it very unfactual, um, and not to be true as to, um, certain people mouthing off as to why Amy Fields resigned, which is far from the truth, had nothing to do with the league football. Um, that's one. Um, so that's not a fact. Um, number two, um, you had Jeff Tyre to come up and he talked about a few things, that's not a fact. Uh, one, I've never assassinated Mario character in that, um, post. I asked questions in that post and what was very disturbing, and you can ask Shane Edge, because he was there and he was very upset and he said he was gonna get in light into Jeff about the lies that he told to round people up about coming up to that Richardson meeting, acting as if that meeting was supposed to be some type of character, the characterization, defense for Mario. When I showed Shane Edge what was in that, uh, post, he was furious with Jeff. And he said that he can't believe that Jeff wasted their time, knowing that that was not true, that Sylvester Moore never assassinated the character of Mario Copic. That's a fact. So, talk to Shane Edge, great football player, probably can kick further than anybody I've ever seen in my life. And he's a very well-respected and honest guy, fact. Also, in that meeting was somebody, Tim, that you follow behind and that you respect and you blow up their phone a lot, which is uh, former Commissioner, uh, Buckey Nash. So, Buckey Nash was a part of that meeting. And the issue came up about money and people being paid to play at Annie Maddox Park. Never in the years have anybody ever came up and said that we're short on money, that we couldn't play at Annie Maddox Park. This year, all of a sudden, all these excuses came up. So, what Buckey said, Buckey said, hey, 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 guys, chill, 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 I got money. I, Buckey Nash went to the county and got thirty thousand, fifteen for football, fifteen for basketball. I, Buckey Nash went to the city and got thirty thousand, fifteen for football, fifteen for basketball. Buckey Nash sitting in that room with Robbie Hollinsworth, Tim Murphy, Shane Edge and quite a few other people, said, that is not true, Sylvester, you're right. I did say that we have enough money to play at both fields and nobody would lose any money because this is the first year that we will have a real budget. And he told them in that meeting and agreed with me, hey, guys, look, we got fifteen, we got thirty thousand for football from the city and from the county. He said, we got way more than enough out of thirty thousand that we can use for basketball because we know for a fact, basketball don't use thirty thousand dollars. He said, in the event that there's any shortfall, we'll pull it from the basketball side. And then next year, we'll have a true QuickBooks account because right now, nobody can tell you, if you subpoena them, ask them to come up here, nobody can tell you, it's always just talk that they losing money. Nobody has nothing on paper, no budget on paper as to what the CFY does, where they lose money at, that's just talk. And so Buckey said, I'm tired of this disorganization of how y'all run things, I'm gonna do it on QuickBooks. So, this will be the first year, no games are played yet. So, I don't know how people perceive that money's gonna be lost with the extra thirty grand. And potentially another thirty grand they can pull out of to play games. So, the money issue was fixed with myself and Buckey Nash being there. And he was gonna be the man who hold the money and set up the QuickBooks account to govern the money. So, he told Jeff, do not let money, Jeff, prevent us from having inclusion and games being played at both fields. Now, what Jeff came up here and said was that he had other issues. What a true effective leader of any organization would do, if they have any issues, they will communicate with board members and say, hey, look, last year at the end of season, he would have came and said, hey, at the end of season, you know, I had some feedback, this happened, that happened. Jeff never came to the board about any feedback. Only when they were put on notice that we found out that they were not gonna play any games at Annie Maddox, did they start having all of these excuses. Another excuse was about people hanging over on the side of the field and the fence and everything else. They do that at Memorial Stadium too, by the way. So, what we decided to do, because for some reason, you know, uh, Annie Maddox and people like myself in my community, we always have to jump over extra hurdles and through extra hoops. So, we said, okay, Jeff, since this is a new complaint and you didn't come at us at the end of the year and we sit down and discuss it like men, okay, what we'll do, we'll go ahead and order a windscreen. I went and measured, three hundred and eighty-five feet long, six feet tall, don't you have the email, David? We did that two weeks prior before the season started. So, every issue that they brought up, we've worked to resolve. Now, all these new things continue to come to light. What any effective leader do is sit down and have a conversation. All these circles that Jeff has created and that some of the commissions are backing, this is the stuff that causes our city to be divided and not unified. Because this could never had to come to the public. We could have handled this in private meetings, somebody could have came to uh, 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 the Annie Maddox board and said, hey, look, we heard this, we have an issue with some board members and we could have privately worked this out. But they weren't willing to do that. They were willing to go on a social media fiesta and they were willing to out all these different people. And, and, and so what I did not do.
You outed everybody.
I, I, whoa, we got, but, hold on.
Nobody, uh, uh.
Now, 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 the, the part about me outing people because I tell the truth and I use my First Amendment as my father, my uncles and all of them serving in military for me to do so, which is my right and my freedom of speech, I think I can do that. And if a person don't like what I put on my social media page and they're not my friend, they are my friend, they can just keep strolling. You don't have to stop and like it, there's stuff I see on my friend page that I don't agree with, I don't like, I don't stop and say nothing. That aside, in that meeting, Jeff agreed to play games, fact. Buckey Nash, Shane Edge, good people were there, Commissioner Williams was there, they were supposed to work it out. Every issue they named in that meeting, we resolved. Now, here's a problem that I have. Now, we want to talk about people's past in the public and we couldn't talk about it in private. But nobody want to mention about Jeff Tyre's. You sit here and you talk about people on the board, but we have a CA, CFY president that ran marijuana and drugs with me for years. So, 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 ho, 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 no, this is a fact, this is, this is a fact. This is a, what do you mean this is it? You allow, you allow, you allowed him to talk, you allowed him to talk.
That's it. When you start calling people.
I did not call nobody out, this is a fact. I, I'm telling you the truth, he sold drugs for me for years, he ran most of my marijuana through Columbia County.
That's it, that's it.
You can't, why you stopping me from talking? I have the right to the floor.
Chairman, call for order, just call for order.
Order, order, order. You're not gonna call people out by name and accuse them of stuff, you have no proof or no evidence.
Yes, I do, I'm the one who sold them the drugs.
This is not a court of law, this is not a court of law.
How I don't have proof when I was a drug dealer that was giving to me?
Hey.
I'm not putting up with that.
Why, bust us the truth?
I just said, you heard me, I'm not putting up with that.
Liz, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Man, I'm, this is fact. This man's dirty, he ain't giving a time.
That's a fact. He ran drugs for me.
Sylvester, that's it, I'm telling, I'm telling you, if he speaks again. Go ahead, Glenn Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I didn't intend to say anything, but since uh, those of you who know me, I don't throw bricks and hide my hand. I was aware of the public record law before Benny Uwe ever elected. So, when I put it in writing, I knew it was a possibility of somebody gonna read it. So, let's be clear about that. Well, let me tell you exactly what I did, I'm gonna read it to you, I can do it within two minutes. This was like on September the tenth, good morning, Mrs. Phil, Attorney Cobaline, I included attorney. I'm writing to make you aware about the possible safety issues at Memorial Stadium. It is my understanding that the beaches are outdated and distant, player unsafe and dangerous. If this is true, the city are putting people at risk and creating a liability for the taxpayers. Please have the appropriate staff inspect the conditions at the stadium to determine if it is safe. I thank you in advance for your attention to my concerns and look forward to your reply. Let me read you her reply real quick on the next day. That was on the night, this is Tim. Good morning, Mr. Bowden, I share your concern. Initially, I agreed to allow the CYFA to have their games at the Memorial Stadium. However, it wasn't until yesterday, now, not me, yesterday, she spoke to somebody else, I guess. It was until yesterday that I understand the overall conditions of the stadium seating. I have sent my Director of Growth Management, Dave Young, and the County Engineer over to assess the concerns at the stadium. Mr. Young has confirmed there is a serious liability issue. Further, I have instructed him to reach out to FYFA representatives to inform them to immediately move their venue to another desirable and safer location. Now, I wrote a letter as a citizen in this community concerned about it. What she did with it was contact who she needed to contact. Now, I don't think I'm wrong as a citizen to raise an issue with someone that I think is the issue. Now, if it wasn't the issue, it wasn't the issue. But I didn't make the decision to uh, for Dave Young to go out there, she called, she asked Dave, it could have been any city, city manager that did the same thing. But I wrote the letter, I don't throw bricks and hide my hand, I stand by my letter and, and, you know, that's it, that's who I am. So, you ain't gotta worry about me doing anything that, that I'm not accountable for. I did it, I wrote the letter and if there's wrong writing that letter, I want somebody to point it out. Cause I don't think anything wrong with, thank you, Mr. Sir.
Mr. Chairman, I, I've seen the email Mr. Bowden speaks of, I don't think there's anything wrong with what happened. What is wrong is structural concerns are pointed out. What is wrong is structural concerns are pointed out about the stadium and they weren't apparently critical enough to stop the draft from happening. And then a whole week goes by before, at the eleventh hour, somebody's called to come out to the stadium and declare the bleachers unfit. Well, then they say, well, we'll rope off the bleachers and just use the field. And then it's communicated to football that, no, you can't use the facility at all at the eleventh hour. You know, and then when you try to get records request on what insurance told you that happened, that didn't happen. The city official lied to her city councilman. Now, I don't know the real reason she resigned or all the reasons she resigned, but that was damn sure one of them because I did, I have talked to a city councilman about the issue and he was gonna call for her termination because of this issue. So that is a fact. Now, if something fishy didn't happen with all that, if you can't put the facts together with all that and say this was sabotage, this was one hundred percent sabotage, you're not gonna make me believe nothing else. And I'm telling you, I'm not gonna have any more of it. I'm not gonna condone any organization or give money to any organization that will sabotage five hundred kids event in this county, again.
Okay, now, it, it seems that y'all already made your decision about Animatics. But let me say this one thing, because the whole.
What is your name?
Vanessa George, Vanessa George.
What is your name and address?
Vanessa George, nine thirty northeast Joe Coney. Now, the whole issue from when I heard Jeff Ty spoke resorted from Mario, who I will go on record and say they hide their rock and, uh, total rock and hide their hand. Also, y'all got a sense of them calling games, but we ain't gonna say nothing about that. Okay, now, this is the message that Jeff Ty is upset about. Community alert, Mario or Copit, what is the problem with Animatics? Animatics Board has worked extremely hard with the county commissioners and the community to get more bleachers, a newly renovated concession stand, heated and air bathrooms in one of the best football fields in Columbia County. All of this was done to have some of the Little League games hosted at Animatics Park. Now, you out of your own mouth to others and myself, you have singly, handedly decided not to schedule any of the little football, Little League football games at Animatics Park. Why Mario? Call Mario and we put the, uh, Richardson Community Center phone number, three eight six seven five four seven zero nine six and tell him we want games at Animatics Park, Park two. That was the post that Sylvester posted that assassinated Mario's character. But let me tell you what y'all do, y'all assassinated Animatics, Animatics got a bad rap. I went to Mr. Copit myself and asked him, are y'all gonna, so why y'all not having games at Animatics? He said, no, I said it, we're not having games at Animatics. See, Mr. Copit, I wish he was here because he knew this was gonna be here. I wanna know why he not here? Because any man would come up here and face it. But let me tell you something, Mario is the, at the realm of all this. He told me he wasn't gonna have any. I went to Richardson Community Center and asked him myself. He said, no, cuz the city don't wanna give us any money. So it's about money. And another thing about money, okay, they maybe losing money, but I tell you who don't get the money, y'all better look at somebody else because we don't have anybody at the door. Copit has somebody take money for them at the door. They get the money, we just run the concession stand and everybody at Animatics are volunteers. Absolutely, and we don't have anybody around the children. So let me tell you, when y'all talking about losing money or not getting money, it ain't Animatics. We don't have nothing to do with that. And all the money we made from concessions, we put it back into the concessions. You can, it all bust open. Every last dime of our money can be sent and you could trace it right on back. We private too, yeah, you may not wanna give to another private, you don't wanna give to a private organization, but you just said the C Y F, whatever it is, is private too. So if you gonna give to them, you need to do Animatics as well. Now, what I'm saying is, we got a bad rap. We did not close the stadium, we don't have no stadium to close. All we posted was, okay, well, look at the bathrooms here and look at the bathrooms there. That ain't why it was closed, it's about the stands. Now, anybody that was for children would not put Mario or any other person who they held in high esteem above the children. This ain't about Mario, this was about the children. So if you cared about the children, you could've put out your beef with Mario at another time and let them children play. Now, if you really wanted them to play, they could've played at Animatics, we never said they couldn't play. Even if you found another place, good, they can play. But for you to say, we not gonna let the kids play because somebody put out a post about Mario and then they act like it was an assassination, we asked Mario a question, ain't nobody say nothing about, Mario, do you did this, Mario, you this? Nobody say anything negative about Mario. Everything we asked, Mario confirmed, Mario, you not gonna have any games at Animatics? No. And he told me, the city don't give him no money cuz he gotta strike the field or what have you. That don't have nothing to do with us, that don't have nothing to do with the children, that ain't had nothing to do with this post. So for y'all to come after Animatics and to come after Animatics Board members, y'all need to look at some of y'all other board members, some of the people at the stadium that's doing things for Richardson, look at their board before you come attack us at Animatics. Cuz we probably look the same, we probably looking in the mirror.
I, I would say, nobody's attacked Animatics Board as a whole. I think we've, we questioned the, some of the actions of some of your individual board members, but we have not attacked Animatics as a whole and we have not said we quit funding them. All we said was, you gotta get your house in order if you want us to keep funding them.
You attack Animatics as a whole when you said, we not gonna, we not gonna fund a private organization, but you say you gonna fund somebody else. You attack Animatics as a whole, you did not attack any other organization. Animatics, we just here for the kids. We all, we all volunteers as well. I could be doing something on Saturday, I could be doing a whole lot of other stuff. I don't have not one child, not one. You think I gotta be out here taking care of somebody else's child?
Thank you, thank you, Vanessa.
But I'm, no, I'm just saying, you saying you're not attacking, you just sat up here. You and Tim Murphy said y'all not gonna do anything for Animatics. Y'all ain't even gotta vote, we already know it, you said it on Facebook, you said it here, we got it.
That ain't, that ain't what I said.
I think, I think the comment was, we're not gonna support that board if that board is complicit in their board member's behavior of sabotaging events.
That, that's, that's.
And the offender status. You've already had your time.
The C F I is a volunteer board, you ain't controlling him. He can say whatever he want and he can act right on Facebook, but y'all ain't gonna say nothing about him.
Vanessa, that's it. That's it, be faithful, Coker.
Mr. Chair.
Hey, I, I, nobody, don't get fussing about it. If you do, you will be athlete.
Good evening, be faithful, Coker, six three six southeast Bayard Drive.
Could you speak into the microphone, you're, you're hard to hear.
What about now? Okay, be faithful, Coker, six three six southeast Bayard Drive. Uh, first, I just want to, um, applaud Mr. Witt. Um, as a parent of students who participate in programs throughout the county, parents do rely on leaders to make decisions about the backgrounds of the individuals who are involved in activities. So I applaud the decision made after finding out that there was a convicted sex offender sitting on a board and you're going to have children exposed to that individual. My concern is that that particular board member has been in that position for at least the last twelve years and at no time was there a procedure in place that the county commissioners detected that that was the background. So I'm concerned as a parent about what the process is for the county to determine the backgrounds of board members that, for programs that you are sponsoring throughout the county. And why is that not part of your verification process?
Ms. Coker, I, I, I think, I think, uh, Mr. Murphy touched on, on this in, in, in his comments and, 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 and I think it'd been a misfortune to say we won't give Animatics any more money, we're not gonna give private organizations any more money. I think what he's saying is that the contract, as it reads now, does not put, does not have any of those things in it. So in order for us to continue in the, in the, in the contract, that contract's gonna have to be brought back before the board and we're gonna have to look at them countywide and make sure, cuz this is a unique situation where public money is now funding a private organization. And, and I think what he's saying in bringing the contract lease agreement back or franchise agreement back is that it would address things like the backgrounds of those boards because we are deficient in those areas.
And we're, and we're not talking about just doing it at Animatics.
Right.
Every one of the community centers. This is something we, you know, it's just, it's a new thing to us. So we're gonna, we're gonna make sure there's not any sexual offenders around kids at, at anything that county funds or any function that has anything to do with government.
I think what we're saying here tonight is, there will be a background check done on any board members for community centers, thing like that.
Thank you very much.
Before they are allowed to settle that board.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I, I, I don't know, I'm not a criminology, uh, uh, major. But, uh, I, I, I think if a person is on probation, it tells them what they can and cannot do on their probation. I, 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 I don't know, but, but if it, if this board is going to, to look at all the community centers and their board members.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the, 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 uh, uh, that has to be changed because we don't have that in there.
I, I agree, that's what Commissioner Murphy was talking about, yeah.
And the other thing is too, uh, uh, Mr. Witt, uh, uh, the board, the previous board fifteen or twenty years ago, how long it been, knew that Animatics South was private. And everybody, when the city was under the impression that what we call Animatics North was the city on that. But from the initial, uh, uh, in local agreement with Animatics, it was with the private section of, of, of Animatics. So we knew that going in and, and Mr. Figel at that time said that we could enter into a in local agreement with a private organization to utilize the, uh, facility for, uh, 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 youth activities.
And, and I'm, I'm okay with all that. I, I, I just wanna make sure because at the time that original franchise agreement was, was written, it was not knowledge that all of Animatics is private and now it is. So if, 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 if now that changes anything legally, we need to address that as well, so.
And, and nobody can then say that we haven't been good to the kids that use Animatics. We have made that place a nice place.
I, I wanna say I appreciate a lot of y'all coming out. If any of y'all got anything to add, y'all can come and just, come up to the time, come on up.
Get my cord right there.
Folks, I don't get up here and talk in front of people very much, I don't have a whole lot to say to people.
We need your name and address, I'm sorry.
Tony Robinson, uh, one eighty-three northwest L Allen Court, Lake City, Florida. Uh, Ron Williams and I, we've been friends for a lot of years. He coached with me when I was coaching junior high school. I started coaching when I left, got through playing football at Florida. I came back to Lake City. I didn't wanna coach at high school. I promise you, I didn't wanna coach. I turned down three coaches there about wanna coach with. What did I do? I went back down into the city and I started playing, coaching Little League football. I've dealt with people of all kinds. I ride by these super duper softball fields over here and I get sick looking at them. Why? Because I call that the rich kids' fields. Football fields, we don't have enough of them. I bitched about it for years, Ron knows I bitched about it for years.
Yes, sir.
We need more fields for the kids. And it's for the low-end kids, is what I call them. Kids, y'all talk about Animatics? Y'all wanna talk about them? By God, talk to somebody like me who grew up right there on them railroad tracks. I grew up off Washington Street. So I know about the field. The field is a good field. I had no problem playing, playing on the field, we played on it last year, I got no problem with it. I got problems with the attitudes of the people there. They, they line that fence row up right behind the players and right behind the coaches. And believe me, you could hear everything they said. They was cussing, they was talking about the kids, they was smoking their marijuana. I didn't appreciate that and I don't appreciate it today. Till they can correct that problem, we don't need to be on that field. I think the field is just as good as the one uptown. I do. And believe me, I played a lot of football, I know a good field when I walk on one. And they've got a good field. And we've all sit here and bickered and we bickered back and forth. And believe me, I read a lot of them things that was on, on that site that he's got and I didn't agree with them. And I don't agree with them about anybody being that way. This whole thing to me, and you don't know something, I've been doing this, I started in eighty-one coaching Little League. And I've coached, I coached three, four, five years and I lay off for a few years. I'd coached three, four, five years and I'd lay off for a few years. Ron, when we went, I coached junior high school, didn't wanna do that, but they talked me into it. And I went to Ron and asked Ron what he coached with me, didn't I? Okay? It ain't about the black, white issue to me. It's about what's happening with the kids. I am so pissed off with what people did to these kids. This past weekend, I don't know what to do. I hate to tell people that I'm affiliated with it. I'm ashamed, I'm ashamed of the adults. Black, white, green, polka dotted, I don't give a darn. But folks, we can't allow this stuff to keep happening in this county. It ain't a black, white issue. Like I said, I grew up, I grew up in the black section. I was one of three white boys in the whole community that I was in. And I played football with them from, I played at that field up there as a Little Leagueer, eight years old, all the way through high school. And, and believe me, if it wouldn't have been for that, I might've been over there in the prison with Tim. It's true. But it gave me a chance to go to school, it gave me a chance. And I spent thirty-seven years of my life teaching school in this county. And I'm proud of every day of it. And I'm proud of what all these volunteers, the ones bitching ain't the ones been out there coaching.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm out there coaching, I'm out there, I was out there every day this week. I've been out there in the rain the last two days, standing in rain, coaching Little League football. It ain't about adults bitching. When you start hurting the kids, then you really begin to piss me off.
I agree, I agree.
That's all I gotta say about it.
Thank you, Mr. Rick, Henry Tony, appreciate it, Tony. You ain't never cussed no player, huh? Cussed me, I know.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Sean Holmgren. I live at two forty northeast Laguna Drive in the center of town. I wanna thank you for having a kid-centric agenda right now and that you do, um, put them first. Most all of the volunteer work that I've ever done has been volunteering with underprivileged kids, helping put computers in the foster homes back in Palm Beach, uh, working with Make-A-Wish, working with children, uh, centric agendas. So I appreciate that you take this so seriously. I do wanna take a moment and admonish a few of the adults and especially you, Commissioner Williams. You were very involved in the city politics last week. You came and you spoke on behalf of the city manager.
Week before last.
Week before last, who, who was inexperienced and had zero years of practice managing any business, certainly not a million-dollar business. I know that you're involved in a lot of the meetings that go on over at Richardson Community Center, which Sylvester Warren, a self-admitted drug dealer, uses as a, as a.
Mr. Holmgren, I'm gonna ask you not to single people out.
Okay, okay, there, there, there's, there's an, there's an equality. There's an equality group that meets over at Richardson Center, which I know you're familiar with, Commissioner Williams. So I would just ask that you try to refrain from associating with people who are, um, more derelict.
Mr. Holmgren, we're not, we're not going there.
Okay.
We're not going there.
And to.
Wrap it up. We're not going there.
Okay, I appreciate your time. Um, I do want to speak for Mr. Koffic. A few times that I've worked with him and met him, he's been an absolute gentleman and he seems to really care more about the kids than anything else that he does. So I, I think it's.
Thank you, Mr. Holmgren.
Appropriate. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, he mentioned my name. I want to clarify something. The, uh, uh, sir, the only, the only reason I got involved week before last because you lied on me. Uh, you said that I was at a meeting with Ms. Field and I, and I was not. Well, wait, wait, wait. Wait, wait, wait. Wait, no, no, no. A lie is a lie. He lied on me. Uh, uh, here's a meeting from that minute that I wasn't even involved in. So you owe me an apology.
He was talking about the city meeting.
No, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, that's it. Okay, okay. Please sit down.
That's what I'm talking about.
Please sit down.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't.
Please sit down, Mr. Williams.
Well, I'm gonna, wait, I'm gonna tell you something, Mr. Chairman.
I know, I know what you're gonna tell me.
But by God, you don't tell me to shut up.
I didn't tell you to shut up.
Okay, I want you to know that now, because I'm gonna say that I got to say.
I'm not gonna allow people to come.
I, I expect you.
I stopped him whenever, I stopped him whenever he started.
When I get ready, I never speak out of turn. Always get your permission to speak.
And I'm asking you, please, just let's.
You don't tell me to shut up.
Let's don't start all that.
You don't, no, you don't tell me to shut up.
I didn't tell you that.
Okay.
My name is Anna Ebersol, five nine five Southeast Putnam. This is the prime example Columbia County has the problems they have. If the board can't even stay here without bickering and complaining, how are we not gonna have these problems? Mr. Williams, if you can stay here and constantly call out racial issues, how can we not have these problems? And if our children are gonna be put in the safety of adults who are not fit, then who's gonna be held accountable for them?
I'm gonna ask y'all to stick to the issue of football, please.
This is football.
No, no, you're not.
But the adult, the adult is the problem.
I agree, but that's, you know, you're, I'm not gonna have you singling people out here.
I, I'm not here to sing.
You're talking straight to Commissioner Williams.
That's where it started.
I'm just.
Ma'am, you, that's, that's not, that's not true.
That's where the problem started. Cause the odds are above adults.
Okay, all right, all right, all right, that's it. Order. Okay, that's it. We're moving on to the subject. Yeah, we're moving on to the subject. That's it. Yes. Yes, we'll take a five minute break. I want to thank everybody for coming. I, I just want to assure y'all that this will not happen again as long as I can. If you, if you know me, you know I'll cuss. But only when it needs to be done. Okay, uh, Mr. Murphy, you ready? Are we gonna reconvene at this time? Uh.
Chair, before, before we go on to the next item, if I may, uh, Joe, would you feel comfortable me putting my request in a motion? I mean, would you suggest that? I mean, it just makes it legal, right?
Whatever the pleasure of the board is, sure.
Yeah, go ahead. Let's, let's get a motion for that this time.
I'll reiterate, I'll make a motion to direct staff, if those necessary, to pull the licensing agreement with the Animatics complex, schedule individual meetings in the next week. We're gonna have with the Commissioners if they're, if they see fit to do so, and give their recommendations on changes if they see to do so also. And bring it back to the following meeting for a resolution.
Second.
I, I, I didn't understand what he was saying. Action, the motion.
Okay, go ahead, Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Williams, what he wants to do is, uh, pull the, uh, contract or the agreement with, uh, Animatics and, uh, get with each Commissioner separately about what they would like to see revised in that agreement. And, uh, bring it back for the board at that time to, to, to approve. And that's the, uh, he wants them to.
Mr. Chairman.
You, okay, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have people in the audience speaking out.
Go ahead.
Uh, okay.
Mr. Williams asked us something.
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I would like to see the county adopt a policy for all community centers and all of them work under the same criteria. Instead of singling one out, we adopt the policy that all the centers work up under. That's electing board members and everything else.
And, and I, I agree with you, Mr. Williams, but this one here, of course, not singling it out, because I definitely support it. Uh, but, uh, you know, with the issues that came arise, but I agree with you a hundred percent. And we, uh, before we take a vote, David, stop me if I'm wrong, but me and you've been having this discussion for a year to get everybody on a simple ABC checks and balances. Uh, bring everybody, and I think our new, uh, I'm not gonna pull out her name here, but our new financial, uh, assistant, I think that's gonna be one of her number one tasks, according to Mr. Kraus. But, uh, we've got a lot of work to do with, uh, the money that's distributed is taxpayers' dollars. Me and you, we can do what we want to with ours. But taxpayers, we're held accountable. It's our fiduciary, uh, uh, duty to, uh, be responsible for their dollar. And so we're gonna start here. This is, uh, this is one on top of the hill at this point in time, and we'll go forward.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I think, I'm, I'm sorry, I think, I think the issue, the issue here is we do have uh, across the board regulations for the community centers already, and, and maybe they need to be revised too. But, but, because the county owns all those facilities, but this one, and I don't know of any other one, maybe they're, they are out there. If they are, we need to include all, all, uh, community centers or groups that are in this situation where the group is private and not accountable in any way to the board, but we give them money. And that, that probably would include youth football too. I, I think it needs to be something like that. It needs to be a situation where the group is private and they have no accountability to this board about who's on their board, but they receive funds. We need to revisit that situation and come up with a policy that addresses that type of, and, and that's not Animatics specifically, but we do need to revisit those types of relationships with the county.
And, 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 uh, Mr. Whit, you one hundred percent correct. And, and I would just urge the board, my fellow members, uh, reach out to staff. Uh, I'm not saying I'm smarter than anybody, because I'm surely not. But I've been involved in the five oh one C three agreements with the county for some twenty-seven years. So I may have a little bit of advantage how one works versus y'all, but I, I would just ask y'all, get them, get them in your hands. Okay, because I assure you, uh, this two thousand twenty-one, there should be changes made.
So, so Mr. Chairman, maybe Mr. Murphy could amend that motion to cover all situations where the contracts are, are like Animatics.
Well.
And let's pull them on.
And, and, and if I may, Mr. Whit, I'd like to lead this motion myself, because I'm distinct to the Andy Maddox uh, contract or leasing agreement, because I want this, I'm fixing to put this to rest in Columbia County. Uh, we, I think we need to start there first, because it is the only unique, I shouldn't say the only, but it is a unique one, because it is privately owned. So we'll deal with it, uh, not single it out, but and I, as soon as we take a vote on that, I, I, I'd like to just keep the vote, the thing separate, because I don't want to sit, be sitting here and have to crawl on David Kraus two weeks from now, why ain't this on the agenda?
I get it. I'll ma, I'll make a second motion. I'll make, I, we'll, we'll deal with both of them.
I get, we got a first and a second, I think, Chair.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I, I, I do not vote for that. I don't believe it's right to single out one, one community center when we can write a policy, uh, adopt it to, uh, to govern all community centers. To me, to me, it, it, it just like it's single out one and, and, and that's not fair.
Well, and, and Mr. Chair, I'll correct that action by making the motion that we also pull any other, uh, contract that is similar to Animatics, where the organization is private and they get public funds, uh, to create a policy to, uh, uh, make sure that they are all compliant with, uh, financials. to, uh, uh, make sure that they are all compliant with, uh, financials, possible offenders on their board, background checks, all that, similar to what we do for our community centers now.
Commissioner Witt, and you're including any entity, not just community centers or animatics type, CYFA, everybody.
I think youth football, I think youth, I think sports boards where we don't, where we give them money, but we don't have a say. I think they, we need to be sure they're doing background checks and financials are available, yes.
A second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, my, my, my mind ain't made up yet. Give me one, one change to, uh, to comprehend on what Mr. Witt has said. We're doing the same identical thing that I asked to be done with all community centers, but we still singing it out just one and do it by itself and then come up with a policy to do all the rest of them. And, and to me, that, that's not, that's not equal justice.
Well, Mr. Williams, I, I, I'll assure you, uh, I'm not singling that one out. I, I, the only reason I put it in that manner is because with the participation we had in this room tonight with so many spread out opinions, it's simply the fact it's the only entity that we, it's the only quote community center that we as the Board of County Commissioners deal with that is privately owned. So if it's gonna remain privately owned, it's got to have, if it's gonna remain privately owned, it can't be ran like it is a, a county community center.
Y'all, excuse me.
We can't fund it.
Excuse me if you think, if I'm wrong. What you're saying is we wanna bring them to the same standard that we bring all the other, that we're going to bring all the other community centers to. We're gonna do it with everything, pretty much.
Correct. I mean, that, yeah, yeah. I believe you, but for, just for Tony gets it clear. I'm not singling out Antimaddox. I moved to spend 300 grand over there and I think it was money well spent.
Okay.
So that's for clarity.
But, but you are single them out because we have made one motion to single them out and then another motion to lap all the old ones together. And if we gonna go on, on, on how many people that come to a meeting and you make a decision from that, then I, 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 I don't know where the backbone at.
Commissioner Williams, I think what Commissioner Murphy is trying to say is Antimaddox is the only private community center we fund. So we, we can't, it's, it is a different matter completely than what's on in the community center.
I, I think what you're saying, it's gonna be hard to apply. The, the community centers are set up completely different than animatics with the same, but we want them to all have the same standard of rules, background checks, everything, accountability, but you have to treat animatics a little differently because it's the only one we have. So there is a, there, there's an issue there.
Clark, did you get the vote, Commissioner Williams sent with the sitting vote on the first one? Okay, let's move. Joel, at this time, I'm gonna ask you to kinda go over the, the core of the.
Yes, sir. Um, and, and understanding that the chair afforded ample time to everybody to speak on the last issue as a matter of great public importance. Uh, the board does generally, there are some people who aren't here all the time, uh, recognizing a two-minute speaking limit for speakers who address the board. Also, in light of some of the, uh, objections that were made during the, uh, discussions, I wanna read Rule 4.705 of the, uh, Board's Rules, Policies and Procedures. Members of the public and designated representatives shall address their comments to the board as a whole and not to any commissioner individually or any group of commissioners. Imposing a demand for an immediate response from the board or any member thereof during public comment shall be considered out of order. Persons shall not address the board with personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or become boisterous. A commissioner shall not engage in dialogue with persons making public comment unless the co, the question or comment is directed through the chair or made with the permission of the chair. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Uh, and I did allow extra time for, for what purpose, purpose of all the people that attended for that issue. I think it was a issue for the whole community. That's why I did allow extra time. And, uh, from this point on, we will go back to our normal two minutes. So, uh, Brandon, if you wanna come up at this time, we'll continue.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. Brandon Stubbs, Community Development Coordinator for Columbia County. The first item I have before you is S D 0195 Hawks Landing. And this is, uh, requested by Brad Wumble on, um, for Cowboy Land Holdings LLC as the owner to request final plat approval. Um, this is in District 5, Commissioner Murphy's district. The Planning and Zoning Board held a public hearing on August 26, 2021 and voted to recommend approval. Uh, you may remember about a month ago, this item came before you as a preliminary plat approval and it was approved at that time. This is the final stage in the approval of the subdivision.
Okay, uh, Board of, this time we'll open up a, uh, public hearing. Is anybody here to speak for or against this? Not seeing anybody. We'll close the public hearing.
Chair, this resides in my district. Uh, this is our latest and newest, uh, waterfront property for sale. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to accept S D 0195.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ready?
Thank you, Commissioners. The second item is a special permit for a special exception. It's S P 2101 uh, for Rum Island. It's a bluegrass festival. Um, it's a special permit requested by Doug Gibson as president of Rum 138 LLC, the owner. Um, it's applied for under Section 1410 of the Land Development Regulations, which regulates special permits. Um, this is for an outdoor concert as well as overnight camping. The subject property has a commercial neighborhood zoning designation. The special permit would be valid only from 12:00 PM Friday, November 19th, 2021 through 12:00 PM Sunday, November 21st, 2021. Uh, there are some conditions that are in the proposed resolution that also mimic, um, some of the county's ordinances that we have in place and that it must comply with the site plan submitted with the application, must obey the county's noise ordinance, and shall not create any nuisances or hazardous features to adjacent properties, shall not create excessive vehicle or traffic, and shall not create any issues related to, uh, vehicle parking. Uh, again, these are items that are written into the resolution that mimic, uh, some of the language within the land development regulations. Um, this is in District 2, Commissioner Ford's district. The Planning and Zoning Board have a public hearing on this matter on August 26, 20, uh, 21 and voted to recommend approval to the B C C. Um, at the said hearing, no members of the public spoke against this, uh, proposed item.
Brendan, does this set a time when the note, when the music has to stop at night?
The noise, the noise ordinance does. Um, so according to the noise ordinance, they cannot have any noise past 10:00 PM. Uh, is my understanding and, uh, the applicant is in the audience if the commission has direct questions as to the operations. But the, um, Mr. Gibson did allude at the Planning and Zoning Board that at 10:00 PM, they have what's called a silent concert or something where everybody's, has headphones. And so there's no noise broadcasted over the speakers. In order to listen, you have to listen on the headphones. So.
So, so the noise will stop at 10 o'clock?
Yes, sir, that's.
For the neighbors.
Yes, sir. As, that, according to what Mr. Gibson testified at the last hearing, yes, sir.
And no parking on the roadside, no blocking roads?
Correct. There'll be, no, no parking would be allowed in right of way or adjacent properties. Parking will be all onsite, uh, as according to the site plan.
Okay, and are we gonna have somebody monitor this?
Um, that would be, if that's the commission's desire, that certainly could be done.
Well, you know, I, I'm just gonna tell you, last time I had, I don't know how many calls at 3:00 in the morning, I could hear the music over the phone like it's in my, in my living room from people half a mile, mile away.
Yeah.
So I, I don't have a problem with this, but I just want to make sure they do go by the rules that they're, they're.
And, and Chairman, uh, um, currently if I'm wrong, Mr. Foreman, but, um, this is a special permit, so any reasonable conditions that this board deems necessary can be placed on this, uh, application.
That is correct.
Commissioner Witt, go ahead.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, on events like this, in their permit application, uh, uh, we should come up with guidelines on certain things that they have to do, and one of them would be security. Uh, they should be able to pay for security, pay the sheriff department, because if anything happens down there or people park inside the road, then the sheriff department gonna have to tell his deputies to go down and try to enforce it. But they should have been made high security for that event. So they could pay for law enforcement to be down there.
Well, I think we can put any stipulation on this. We won't.
Um, Chair, they do have in their application provisions for private security. They have a, um, a contract with a private contract security company to provide security, but we don't have any contract with the sheriff's department to provide security, but they do have a contract with a private security company for security at the event. Now, obviously, like I said, this is a, um, a permit that is subject to special conditions that the board, uh, deems necessary. So, um, any stipulations this board, uh, would deem appropriate, we can definitely add those as well.
And Commissioner.
I want, sure, I want to ask the sheriff something.
Okay.
Sheriff, hon, huh?
I'm sorry, Joel, you.
While the sheriff's coming up, if you look on page 87 of your agenda packet, that's the application. And these are self-imposed restrictions, uh, Rum 138's been placed on itself, and the first one is securities being provided for by Signal Eight Security of Ocala, and they provide a license number. They also address the parking issues and things like that. So Commissioner Williams, to your point, they are addressed, and thi, this application is incorporated in the resolution if you approve it.
My question would be, did they know the noise ordinance of Columbia County?
They've been advised, yes, sir.
Okay.
Here, here, here's my concern, and why I ask the sheriff to come up. When, when we, we have these, these events, if there's noise that's aggravating the neighbors, they're gonna call the sheriff department. If they park inside the road, a congestion or that, they're gonna call the sheriff department. A private security company do not have the ability to arrest somebody on a county ordinance for noise or violating parking. So we don't, we don't, we, 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 we are not solving potential problem. Do, do, do it make sense, Sheriff? You're the one that's gonna receive the call, don't you?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, I guess if you get a complaint, you will address that complaint at that time.
Each one that we get a call to. The, the ordinance, what we'll do is, uh, we'll go out over there, we do the warning as we talked about. Uh, when y'all put that in place, we'll warn them. If we go back, then we actually go after whoever the, the organizer is or, or whoever's putting on the event. And then we, uh, we cite them. If they continue, then we'll work on, on arresting them on misdemeanor charge.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing that bothers me about this a little bit is that private security is paid for and by them. And I think they'll let a lot slip, you know what I mean? So I don't want the sheriff to have to go out there one time because that's taxpayers' dollars. So I kinda agree with, I don't know how to enforce that, but I know because I used to do private security, you're a little beholden to the guy that's paying you and you let the music go a little longer and you let it, but I just don't, I, I think we ought to have something if the sheriff's office is called more than once after a warning, then it shut down or something. We, we gotta.
Well, I guess if they violate, if I'm reading this right, if they violate the noise ordinance, their, their permit is revoked at that point.
Yeah, it, it, Mr. Chair, this, this, Mr. Stubbs did a good job addressing this. We talked about this at length. He's your land development regulation administrator, so he's got some authority here. Section 5 says, "The special event shall at all times be conducted in compliance with the application and the site plan submitted as part of the petition. Further, the special event shall be conducted in compliance with the county's noise ordinance. If the proposed use is found noncompliant with the application's, uh, site plan or county ordinance, the special permit shall be revoked and of no force or effect." So what would essentially happen is if Mr. Stubbs was to learn that there was a violation and, and, and Rum 138 knows this. He can revoke the permit, at which point the sheriff runs everybody off that property because they're operating without a permit. So the, the, Rum 138 knows.
Well, let me, let me, let me get a clarification here. So the night of the event.
Brandon, stop.
Okay.
It would have to be, yeah, it would be.
Brandon, you stand up all weekend.
Who's gonna, who's gonna be on call.
I want you out of bed, wait.
My deputies go out there.
He's the one who would determine that the, the permit's been violated. Rather than the Board of County Commissioners, he would actually determine the violation of the permit, not of the law, of the permit.
Mr. Chair, I believe they said that the, the last concert was a silent disco and, and I know when I first came on this board, I had to introduce y'all what Uber was. So, so, so maybe at the next, uh, you know, conference or all that, I might could introduce y'all to a silent disco, but there's no noise. Everybody's got their own set of headphones.
And that starts at 10 o'clock.
And, and, and the 10 o'clock is the noise ordinance cutoff, so.
Yeah. I, I mean, I have no problem as long as, long as Mr. Gibson knows that if he violates his noise ordinance, his, it, it will be revoked at that time and he'll have a hard time getting the permit, so. Uh, 'cause I'm gonna tell you, last Thanksgiving, I had a nightmare. I mean, I'm sure you did too. I know you did. So, uh, I'm just saying, I don't, never want to go through that again. So I, I, this is in my district. I'll make a motion to approve this at this time.
Second.
Yeah, we're gonna have public comment. If you don't have public comment, come up.
No, he won't. He wants to.
Yeah, I just wanna address a couple of things. Uh, hey, wild night, y'all. Thanks for, uh, being here. Uh, Doug Gibson, uh, 460 Southwest Riverland Court, Fort White, Florida. Um, no, we're well aware. Listen, the board has already addressed the sound issue. Uh, the camp concert that was two years ago, uh, you all let us go till midnight. And we didn't go past midnight. So if you've got calls after that, I'm sorry you forgot calls after that. We are certainly not interested in you getting any complaints about what we're doing. We've taken very big steps. In fact, if you remember, two years before that concert, we had Summer 72. And in Summer 72, we had this thing that was called a silent disco. Silent disco is, it's all headphones and everybody goes completely silent. So at about 2:00 in the morning that night, um, the sheriff pulls up, actually it wasn't the sheriff, but you know, cops pulled up and they, they got out of their car and they're like, uh, we don't get it. What's going on? You got all these people dancing and we don't hear nothing. And I took off my headphones and I put it on the cop, he put the headphones on, he goes, he's like, "Your neighbors must love you." We have one neighbor that doesn't, and I'm sorry that neighbor was calling you. And I'm sure maybe there was more than just the one, but we are doing everything in our power to make sure that this is not anything like the last time. So at 10 o'clock, it goes silent. That means the amplifiers turn off and there's no more amplified music. The bands know that. It's all part of their contracts. And then it goes silent disco and they're gonna go and play still live music. This isn't disco music and it's not played on a record. This is live musicians playing through headphones. If you've never seen it, it's quite amazing. We welcome you all to come out. I'm not interested in, uh, any complaints and really, we're not, the issue isn't music. We do live music often. We do live music on Saturday nights. We quit at 10 o'clock. That's just the law. That's what you guys passed. We're asking for the camping. That's really what this whole permit is about. We can't have camping there, so we can't have the guests stay there and sleep there and overnight, so that's what we're trying to do. Make them safe, so we're looking for the camping.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
We're not interested in, in any sound.
Thank you. Commissioner, open up, open up a quick public hearing.
Okay, we're gonna open up a public hearing at this time. Is anybody here to speak for or against this?
Sound like Brandon's going camping.
Okay, not seeing anyone. We'll close the public hearing this time. All right, I will make a motion that we approve this, uh, resolution. Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Gibson? Like I said, I'm not against this, but I'm telling you. Okay.
He'll, he'll be there for the silent disco.
Just don't let him dance.
Don't let him dance. That would be a heck of, I've seen him dance a time or two.
That's y'all's problem.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, this time we're gonna move on to Mr. Kraus.
Yeah, consent agenda.
Thank you, Brandon.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Same move.
All except item number six.
And three. That would delete it.
And three? Okay, I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Take a deep breath. We are now having a public hearing. The second public hearing on Resolution Number 2021 R37, second public hearing for the fiscal year 2021, adoption of the millage rate of 7.815 mils. Uh, as we said before, we have to have a budget by October 31st, which runs. to September thirtieth, has to be balanced. We did publish everything in the truth in millage rate, uh, which were sent out, notices were sent out by the property appraiser, and you are required to have two public hearings. This is the second one. Certified tax value for Columbia County is three billion one hundred and eighty-two million eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. You sent a tentative maximum millage rate of eight point oh one five, and you're holding the two public, you held workshops. So now what we wanna do is open the public hearing, uh, but before we take comment, we wanna read the resolution into the record. So I apologize for this, but we're gonna read the resolution into the record. Resolution number.
Any's open public hearing first.
Oh, okay.
And then you read.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing at this time. Anybody here to speak for or against this?
Oh, no, we gotta read it first.
And now we're gonna read, and now you're gonna read the resolution first.
You have to open it, then we have to read it.
There you go, okay.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-one R thirty-seven, a resolution of the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, adopting the final levying ad valorem taxes for Columbia County for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, providing for an effective date. Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, on September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, adopted fiscal year final millage rates following a public hearing as required by Florida statutes two hundred point sixty-five. Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners for Columbia County, Florida, held a public hearing as required by Florida statute two hundred point zero six five. And whereas, the gross taxable value for the operating purposes not exempt from taxation within Columbia County has been certified by the Columbia County Property Appraiser to the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners as three billion one hundred and eighty-two million eight hundred and eighty-eight five hundred dollars. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, that, one, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one twenty-two operating millage rate is seven point eight one five mils, which is more than the rolled-back rate of seven point seven five eight eight mils by zero point seven two percent. Two, this resolution will take effect immediately upon adoption. Be it further resolved, resolved by the board, that if the final taxable value on the tax roll, as certified by the property appraiser, is at variance with the value initially certified by more than one percent, the chairperson of the Board of County Commissioners is authorized to adjust the above-millage levies to bring the same funds as contained in the approved budgets, duly adopted at a public hearing the sixteenth day of September twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, now.
Call for comment.
We'll have comment at this time. Anybody here to speak for or against it? Not seeing anyone? I get a motion?
Chair, I make a motion to accept resolution number.
Gotta close the public hearing.
I want to close the public hearing at this time.
Uh, I make a motion to accept resolution number twenty-twenty-one R dash thirty-seven, fiscal year twenty, adoption of millage rate of seven point eight one five mils.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
All right.
Uh, the next item is the budget. I'm not gonna go through it as much as we did last week, because we have just gone through this at the previous public hearing. If anybody has any questions, here is the revenue chart. Uh, here is the chart of all those things. The charter amendment makes us appropriate year-end monies separately as part of the budget. These are all the year-end monies we appropriated. This is how much the board approved, and to which funds they appropriated those funds to. So if anybody has any questions, we can answer those. This is the twenty-twenty-one twenty-two budget for a grand total of one hundred and sixty-eight millions five hundred and ninety-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. The general fund, which is the one most people are concerned about, as you can see, has grown from fifty-one million two hundred and ten thousand six hundred and sixty-eight last year to sixty million seven hundred and twenty-three thousand sixty-eight dollars this year. These are all the services provided by the general fund. These are all the other funds we have that do not levy ad valorem taxes. So the general fund levies the ad valorem taxes, these funds do not. What we brought about, what we mentioned last week, and would like to mention again, is the reason there is so much difference between the twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two budget, a lot of it has to do with the excess rollover funds that we received. It was a one-time thing, based on cutting everything back due to COVID, based on federal funds coming in, and it was just a one-time influx of cash. I don't think you'll see those kind of jumps again in the future, but they are reflected in those numbers. So now we would like you to open the second, open the second public hearing for resolution number twenty-twenty-one R thirty-eight, and then I'll read the resolution into the record.
We'll open public hearing at this time. Go ahead, Dave.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-one R thirty-eight, a resolution of the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, providing for an effective date. Whereas, the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, on September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, held a public hearing as required by Florida statute two hundred point zero six five. And whereas, the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, set forth the appropriations and revenue estimates for the budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one in the amount of one hundred and sixty-eight million five hundred and ninety-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, that, one, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two final budget be adopted. Two, this resolution will take effect immediately upon adoption, duly adopted at a public hearing the sixteenth of September twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, we'll open it up for public comment at this time. Anybody here to speak for or against this?
Just, um, to let the board know, you do have in your packet a public comment from the Third Judicial Circuit requesting additional money. Uh, there was a board member that did request, as part of the public hearing, to talk about additional monies for the Richardson generator, and you also have a lot of people here wanting to talk about the budget for animal control.
Mr. Chairman, I, I guess I have a question for Mr. Kraus. I can't see that well. How much does the, uh, revenue does the, uh, property tax produce? I know it's on three million, billion, but how much does that?
So the general fund, I'll show you right here, it's easier to show you. Thought it was easier to show you, it's in here somewhere.
Mr. Bowden, we all know who you are, but you have to repeat your name for the clerk for the hearing.
Goodnight, Bowden.
Thank you, sir.
David.
That's okay, it's easier just to show here. Um, if you look on the first page of your revenue that was in your packet, um, that shows you the total general fund. Um, the ad valorem tax at seven point eight five one mils generates twenty-four million eight hundred and seventy-four thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Only thing I ask that, Mr. Chairman, uh, and I, I, in the past meetings, I, I understand everybody say that we've given the taxpayers a break, and that's true. You're giving the property taxpayers a break, and I think that when you say that, and I'm a taxpayer, so I, I appreciate the break, but I think when you, when, when a person say we giving the taxpayers a break, in actuality, you're only giving a break to the property taxpayer, because the rest of those folk, they're not getting a break on, on the sale taxes and, and the fees that's going up. And when you think about the total amount of your budget, uh, the ad valorem tax doesn't produce enough money to even fund law enforcement, same thing with, with, within the city. And so I guess the point I wanted to make, just so that people won't get the wrong impression, that we giving the taxpayers a break. Well, if my mom was alive today, she wouldn't feel that, and she wouldn't, she, she would know that you're not talking to her, because she didn't pay any property taxes, if you get my, get my understanding. But I do appreciate, uh, the transparency on your budget process, I really do. I like the idea that you allowed public comments upfront through the whole process. You took it before you made a decision, and I, I wanna commend you on that, but, um, I just wanna point that out, that when you say we giving the taxpayers a break, uh, that's kinda, that's not totally true, if I'm making sense.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You wanna address that?
Mr. Bowden is correct, it is a property tax cut, and, and, you know, and, and his point is well-taken, but the intent of this board was to give the property tax owners a break. We, uh, we gave ta- a tax break across the board last year to the tune of four million dollars, uh, in waived garbage assessment, and, um, you know, I, I had many, uh, much feedback from constituents in my district who own businesses and pay heavy property taxes to, hey, so you did something across the board this year, why don't, why don't you give the property owners a break? So I'm committed to, you know, all kinds of tax cuts when we can do them, and property tax is one of them, and I think this year was time to do that.
I'm grateful, now, don't get me wrong.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I, I know.
Anybody else? State your name and address, please.
Thanks for listening. Uh, my name's Ken Moshe, two thirty Southeast Brown Street, Lake City, Florida. You say you giving a tax break, you're lowering the millage, but you raised my house value sixteen thousand dollars.
I've spoken, I, I've spoken to Mr. Moshe about this issue, and, and there's some, we don't, we don't do that, but, but I will say that I think there's a mistake there. I, I'm, I'm gonna get with the property appraiser.
Yeah, I said, say the property appraiser, you need to talk about that.
He lives over on Brown Street, and they dropped, they jumped him sixteen thousand, there's something wrong there.
Did you add on?
I think.
And, 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 you know, and I, I, I'm, I'm just the opposite. When my, uh, 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 property value goes up, for what it's worth, I like that, although my taxes go up, but I like that increase in the worth of my, my property.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Williams. Uh, I, I, I would like to, and, and I don't know, I'm, I'm new to this, you're gonna start seeing me a lot, though. Uh, I've got some real issues with, I didn't see anything in this budget, and I didn't get a, a moment, but just a moment to look over it. Uh, we got a serious crime problem, and it appears I live in the highest crime area in town, and I don't see any money set aside there to address the problem.
Well, Mr. Moshe, we get the, we get the sheriff's office, the lower seventeen, making a year to fight crime.
Um.
Yeah.
He's happy with his budget, so.
Well, that's all I wanted to say, right there.
Okay. But now, if you look at, if you look at the budget for the sheriff's office, that's that part of it.
But now, you live in the city, so, yeah.
No, he don't, he don't live in the city.
Oh, use the minute of it, right?
Okay, that, that's, thank you, Mr. Moshe. Anybody else?
Yeah, as it pertains to the budget, I think.
No, she said animal, she, she, she wants to talk about an animal control problem she has. Come on, come on up, it, it, this pertains to the budget, I don't know what, I don't know what your issue is. Are you complaining about the budget, or you wanna talk about the budget?
All of the above, but some of it I'm gonna be dealing with him tomorrow.
This is about the budget, now, if we're gonna ask you to stick about it.
My name's Camille Souza. I live at three fifty-five Southwest Short Lane, Lake City. I'd like to know how you expect two officers to deal with eight hundred and one square miles in this town? They need, they need funding. They need funding. Are you gonna do anything to help them? When you help them, you help us. Can you?
So, so. Mr. Chair, I think you're gonna have more comments from, from more people about animal control, so let them all speak, and then we'll address what, what's going on with the budget.
Yeah, uh, so you're asking for money for the animal control?
We need at least six officers. Two is not cutting it.
Okay. Thank you. Come on up. Yes, yes, this public hearing, yes.
Public hearing about the budget.
Good evening, I'm Robin Tobek Ward, the, um, executive director for the Lake City Community, um, Lake City Columbia County Humane Society, and we are here to, um, discuss our budget, and I have asked Richard Rossi to, um, do a presentation for us.
Robin, if you would, address us, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have asked Mr. Richard Rossi to do a, um, presentation for us.
Good night, coming up first.
Your name, please?
My name is Richard Rossi, I live at eight one four Southwest Valley Lane, Lake City, Florida. Uh, I know some of you and your families, if you wanna know us, we're Rossi Hardware, which is in business here nineteen thirty-nine to nineteen ninety-two. I recently retired after sixteen years working as a CFO with the Jackson Aviation Authority, and I was approached by, uh, the Board of Directors of the Humane Society, and based upon publicity, they'd gotten that, the two recently people being terminated at the Humane Society, they asked me to come in and do an independent audit of the, of the Humane Society, to go over the transactions, the books, uh, of the, the internal procedures, marketing, all, everything about the society. For the last, um, fifteen or sixteen weeks, I have done that for the society. The soc- society's on a calendar year basis, you just received recently our audited statements for two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. Richard Powell is working on the twenty-twenty, which should be completed, completed pretty soon. We wanted to give you up-to-date numbers, so what I've done, we have what you have, and I passed out to you, is our actual numbers for two thousand twenty-one, from January through June. I've gone through all transactions, I've checked and verified the data, of, make sure that the transactions are properly recorded. Do I need to continue, or?
Yeah, I guess, Mike is.
Okay, okay, recorded. The statement activity denied independence, an assessment that is a fair and accurate depiction of the Humane Society. The Board of Directors wanted to make sure that we were public with scoring the Humane Society after the recent publication, so I wanted to give you my assessments, what I found. We found that an employee of the Humane Society had taken a material donation to the Humane Society and put it into an unrestricted account, operating account, where, where he specifically told by the Board of Directors to put it into a restricted account, building fund. While that same employee, employee also purchased personal items on his, uh, Humane Society credit card, that employee was terminated on March first, and proceedings are pending in court. There were no material arrows in the financial or accounting records, there's no indication of evidence of theft anywhere on the authority, other than ones I just mentioned, and there's no indication of evidence of fraud, other than the ones that I just mentioned. There was no misrepresentations and no improper accounting practices. We did, I did find opportunities, however, for the society to strengthen their internal controls. Uh, my findings mirror those of Richard Powell and what you'll find in the audit that he did for twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. He pointed out that the cash receipts in the daily were not deposited promptly or currently as it should be the next day. Credit card and greater credit card support documentation of the credit cards and disbursements and fixed assets were not timely recorded. This was presented to the Board of Directors, they were proactive, they passed a resolution addressing all cash inflows, cash outflows, transfers between the animal shelter, the clinic, and the thrift store, and fixed asset management. They also made sure that went over the duties and responsibilities of managing staff to make sure that they do not overlap, and basically they had two sets of eyes viewing every transaction. Those processes and procedures have been forward since that date for the last several months. As shown on the animal control, on the statement that I passed out to you, six months today, the animal control has lost a little over ninety-four thousand dollars. The board has been recognizing their costs are going to increase, because currently forty percent of the employees with the animal, with the Humane Shelter make less than ten dollars an hour, so as the wage increases go up, their rates are going to go up over the next three years. They've been actively see, actively seeking other ways to increase revenues to help offset or defray the cost of animal control. They hired a full-time vet, vet who started in January this year, who provides vet services for the Humane Society and the general public. I'd like to put in a sales pitch here, that some people think in the, in the community that you can't go to the vet at the Humane Society if you're under a certain level of income. Anyone can go to the vet at the Humane Society. We ask you to tell your friends and neighbors, we'd love to have them attend, we have a grade, and use our services and help out a worthy cause. End of commercial. Okay. Um, that is, as you will see on the report, the vets, uh, the clinic is starting to produce a profit, which is also offsetting the cost of the, uh, animal control. In twenty twenty, they obtained attractive lease on property over on Main Bo- Main Boulevard, and opened a thrift store in February of twenty twenty-one. As you also can see on there, the thrift store is profitable, the community has really supported the thrift store, donating high-end items and. the thrift store, donating high-end items and being very supportive. Through the first six months of the year, this year, the clinic and thrift store have produced a net profit of about twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. This has reduced the society's loss on the animal care of about, uh, down to sixty-five thousand, approximately a thirty percent reduction. We wanted to give you the information tonight, so you could have the most current information that we have at the society. Uh, we are aware that it's losing, and that's the reason that the, uh, the executive director and I'll be asking you, we need a contract with the county in order to cover the, the risks that we have, because we do not have the sovereign immunity as an independent contractor with you, and we also are seeking additional funds due to the fact that, um, the costs are going up and what we're doing. We think before the end of the year that we have recovered more of the costs, so we don't think it's gonna be as bad as it is now, but we wanted to give you the up-to-date numbers. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
With chair, with chair.
Yes, uh, if, if I'm, if I'm reading this right, uh, are, are you saying if a reference is sixty-five thousand, uh, eight hundred and forty-two dollars, eighty-one cent, eighty-one cent is what you're gonna be showing?
That is, that is our net loss for the first, through June, through June, Mr. Williams, yes, sir. They called a state of activ-, statement of activity today, when I was taking accounting, it was called a profit and loss statement, it's the same thing, so that's what this is.
So your payroll expenses for animal service is three hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and ninety-one, and that's not even a full year?
That's through six months, yes, sir.
That's January through June?
Yes, sir, yeah.
How many employees do you employ?
They have currently have thirty-three employees, uh, most of them are in the animal services. Uh, we also point out that one of the reasons for their payroll is that the animal services provide service twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. When they send them out at night, they send them in teams of two for security reasons, and they do not know how long they'll be there, but they cannot interact in any, any situation. Whoa, excuse me, sorry about that, they can't interact in any situation until the law enforcement gets there, so that increases the overtime and the hours.
Got thirty-three employees, and we only got two people going out, if the young lady spoke?
We have more than two, you wanna address that, Robin?
We got thirty-three employees in animal control?
No, thirty-three employees with the Humane Society.
That's a clinic.
But you're billing them all out to animal services?
No, we are not, they're not getting filled out to animal services, they're separated in our payroll.
I'm looking at it right here, animal service, payroll three thirty, two ninety, forty-six.
Hundred and twenty-one.
Clinic one twenty-nine, four ninety-one, thrift store eighteen, eighteen, total four hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Yeah, it's part of this needs to be over here, I think, yeah. You're just telling how many feel that, yeah.
Yeah, so I, regardless of, I mean, what Richard has, um, presented, we have two animal service officers at this time that are certified to go out, um, and basically through COVID, we ended up, uh, very often having one, and with the amount of calls that we get and, um, the amount of, um, times that our, uh, animal control officers have to go out in the public, it puts us in a, um, in, in a bad situation.
I mean, I'm trying to put this in perspective, our whole COVID budget is only a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars a year.
One of the reasons you see the higher interest, anytime the vet works, works, does chemicals or whatever, and she's taking care of animal care and so forth, then her time when she's doing that for the animals at the shelter is charged to the animal control. And the animal control shelter has been full now for eight or nine months in a row, I think we have right over four hundred dogs and cats in there, so that is part of where her salary comes into that. Also, part of the salary is apportioned for the administrative costs for payroll, part of the salary is apportioned, um, for maintaining, uh, doing your payroll.
Can you speak into the microphone, I'm having a hard time.
Okay, sorry about that, is that better?
Yeah.
So part of those general administrative costs are apportioned, and this will be in any company to the division, over to the animal services.
How many employees do you have in animal control?
What do you have?
I have, um.
Well, you have thirty-three, there's, you have thirty-three, there's four in the thrift center, let's put you down at the twenty-nine, and the clinic has, I believe, four, so you have twenty-four, twenty-five.
Animal control?
Yes.
And we only got, have twenty-four employees, we only got two people going out catching dogs?
Exactly, no, that is exactly, because.
Sounds to me like you have staffing problem.
Well, the staffing problem, they're making nine dollars an hour, they're the kennel techs that clean and feed and take care of the animals on a daily basis, so, I mean, they're, they're the ones who are taking, you know, taking up, um, most of the, um, the twenty-whatever, um, employees that we have.
Robin, I, I'm not, I'm not debating, I'm just, I mean, think about for a minute what you're saying here, you got twenty-four employees and you got two people catching dogs? So this is animal control, and you, you keep, you keep throwing it in on the, on the Humane Society side.
No, I, I'm not, it's right.
It's combined together, yeah, the animal control, the Humane Society, maintaining the act, caring for the animals is combined together on this B and L, yes, okay.
And the reason for that is because we don't just provide animal control, we provide animal services, okay? So our constituents want us to provide animal services, not control of animals and euthanize those animals. You gonna?
Yeah. Roy Armstrong, G five six, Southwest West Gent Glen, I'm an adoption counselor at the Humane Society. I just maybe, think maybe you need some clarification, that the Humane Society exists as a Humane Society five oh one C three, that is contracted to the county and the city to provide animal control services. Not only is there two dog catchers, animal control officers, we have to facilitate the maintenance of those animals, feeding, housing, all that, getting them into new homes, keeping them healthy, so that you don't have sick animals back out there running around. So there's more, here's where your twenty-four employees are, I'm one of the twenty-four, I don't work for animal services, animal control, I work for the Humane Society, but I am the recipient of those stray, dropped off, unwanted animals, to give them homes, okay? So it's, it's one big picture, and I think you may be not be seeing that, okay? So the budget and all that, and, and if anybody's worked with a volunteer or a nonprofit animal organization, adoptions loses money all the time, it just never, it is not profitable, 'cause I can't charge five hundred dollars for an animal to keep my head above water and expect someone to come in and get one, okay? Adoption side is a losing business. Right now, animal service side can be a losing business because we're having to feed, let me just say this, originally, I don't know how many, Mr. Williams, you probably know, back when the Humane Society did not run animal services, you kept an animal for how many days, sir?
Three days.
Three days, and what happened after that, three days? It went to the landfill.
Yep.
There's nothing humane about that, okay? Nothing humane about that. And that's why the Humane Society, Ms. Margaret, come in and said, hey, I can do this service for you, they work with contracting, you probably remember from day one, when the, when the contract, the services were provided. Also, back then, there was other, the population in the county was much less, that means the animal population is much less, okay? Now, we are full, okay? When I say we, the Humane Society, including animal control, is full, we get dogs in, I get in one day, if I have a good day, if I get nine animals out, twelve came in, okay? And we're not in the business of euthanizing and killing animals, it takes money to feed them, takes money to clean them, takes money to care for them, which is inoculations, vaccinations, care and all that, that's where the money goes, so.
Do you euthanize animals now?
We do euthanize animals for three reasons, health of the animal, in other words, if, if it's humanely, okay, a danger to the public, or if owners, uh, owner requested, and even in that case, and I'm not animal services, but I'm speaking for them, even in that case, if we can't see there's, there's a health or danger or something, we may not put that animal down, even if they request, because it's not humane to put an animal down, just because you don't want your dog anymore, I want you to kill it, okay? We, we're not in that business, even at animal control, we're not in that business. And that's the difference, and I think that's where some people see, we're not the dog pound anymore, dog pounds don't exist anymore, okay? I remember as a kid, I grew up in Ohio, I remember taking puppies to, then the dog pound that we didn't want, and I forgot the crate that I took them in, my mom sent me back. It wasn't a half hour, I go back there, and there's a man there with a bucket inside another bucket and a hose, and guess what was in those buckets? The puppies. We don't do that no more, we're not, we're a humane society, okay? Now, we listened to a lot of conversation earlier tonight about a lot of stuff, let's all be together, let's, let's think about the animals that can't care for themselves, and that's why we're here. So I, I just wanted to be clear, when you talk about how, you know, why you got thirty-three employees? Well, it takes thirty-three employees to care for all the animals that your county is dumping upon us, and I'll say that, your constituents, okay? Including the city, okay? So that's where it's all, I just wanted to make sure you get the big picture and look at that, 'cause we sure don't wanna go back to where you were, and an animal had three days and he ended up in the landfill, 'cause then you're gonna have the landfill people saying, hey, we need to increase the millage, 'cause you're filling us up, okay? I appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks, Roy, um, so I think that's where the, the issue is with us, we're not providing animal control, we, we, I don't, I believe the Board and I stand strong, we will not, um, euthanize animals just because we need to make space, so if that's what the county wants us to do, I think we're gonna probably have, uh, an issue with that, and, um, we wanna provide animal services. That is what our constituents are asking us for, that is what I came into this business for, um, to make our community better and help the animals that can't help themselves, and, um, we see the worst of the worst, and, um, we see the best of the best, but, um, we are, are, we need a contract, we haven't had a contract since two thousand nineteen, and, um, we need a contract or we can't move forward, and we need money to do that, so it's basically, we're at your request and, you know, hope that you see the, um, the importance and the need for our service in our community.
How, how much of an increase are you asking for?
I believe what I sent, um, to you this morning, I revised the, uh, contract at three years. Excuse me, sorry. So currently, we are, um, without a contract, we have been receiving.
Over ten years?
It's roughly a million and a half dollars for the next three years.
For the next three years?
Over three years.
Over three years?
Over three years.
The spreadsheet, the spreadsheet that the animal control office.
Total, a million and a half for the next three years.
Yeah, wait, wait.
The spreadsheet that the animal control office sent us this morning, called for an increase of a hundred and seventy-four thousand next year, and then an increase a year after that, and an increase a year after that. We're currently paying them three hundred and seventy thousand a year, they're asking by the end of three years to pay them six hundred thousand a year.
All right, so, so over the three years that she spoke about, that, a million dollars, uh, divided by, 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 by three years, right?
Well, it's not a million dollars, by next year, it would be an additional hundred and seventy-four. I don't remember the year after that, I think it was like seventy-four the year after that, and then fifty-something, but basically, by the end of the three-year contract, they wanna be receiving six hundred thousand dollars a year.
No, no, I'm, I, all I'm asking for is how much they're asking for this year?
Hundred and seventy-four thousand in addition, a hundred and seventy-four thousand some odd dollars in addition to the three seventy they currently receive.
In addition to what?
A hundred and.
I'm sorry, a hundred and four.
It's a hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and nineteen, and included in that number is another animal control officer who is ready to start on Monday, if we have a contract, and two additional support staff, and, um, some, um, equipment that we need to, um, supply our staff.
Is there a contract in place now, that's covering this?
The contract expired, and we're on a month-to-month basis.
And we are not going to move forward with, um, any services until we have a signed contract, we're legally, um, putting ourselves in a situation that.
Well, 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 I know that we can't go back like we used to be, now, I, I, I'm not gonna sit here and say I'm gonna breach a three-year period, or a four-year period, but we'll do, to me, we'll do it just like we dealing with the, with the county, uh, sorry, if, if it present itself next year, then we'll do what we can, well, I'm not gonna commit that, yeah, we gonna do this, this, and this for the next three years, take one year at a time.
I, I, I don't think that's what they're asking for, they're asking for a three-year contract.
You're saying you can't go forward without a three-year contract?
We, we need a contract, because there's a letter in there from Marlon Feagle, y'all, and Marlon, who pointed out that the Humane Society is at risk without a contract, when we had a contract with you under paragraph five, it provided that the sovereign immunity that the county has transfers to the authorities, basically as an agent situation, that is necessary for the authority, for the Humane Society to go forward.
But it's not legally a three-year contract, as long as you have a contract.
We just need a contract, correct.
It could be yearly, whatever, you just need a signed contract to do your duty.
Correct.
Okay, it doesn't have to be three years.
With the funds that we need to support the, um, wage increase that's coming, I mean, I have ten kennel techs that make nine dollars an hour, and they work the hardest than anyone, so, I mean, this, this is where we wanna put our money to the people that are helping these animals daily.
How did we get to where this went from month to month, and it wasn't?
At the point that the contract was about, was being renegotiated, we did sit down and we did renegotiate a new contract, that's about when the issues came up with the animal control, employees that were fired and now are, um, facing legal issues.
Yeah, David is correct.
And the board decided at that point, until the legal issues resolved, until the audits were in, till we could see what their true financial picture was, they didn't wanna contribute any more money, in fact, you voted, um, I think, last month to say, we'll keep the same dollar amount, go month to month, until June, when all the audits are in, and we can review the audit.
That's what I thought, I thought we had some kind of contract agreement through June.
Well, it was, it was what the commission voted to do, but it's not a contract, because both sides didn't agree.
And we have been operating from month to month for a while.
We have been operating from month to month since the last contract expired.
And you're saying that puts you in legal jeopardy?
Yes, it does, there's a letter in there from Marlon Feagle, which will point out that increases the rest of the authority. The reason we gave you and went ahead and put the effort forth to give you six months was to let you know, Board gave me instructions to give you assurances, there's no theft or anything like that going on at the Humane Society, or anything improper, and that's why we did a detailed investigation, we gave you six months of this year. The issue that we had was confirmed, confined to one individual.
That was an internal investigation, right, Mr. Rossi?
Yes, sir, it was, yeah, and they asked.
Why do you, in such a sensitive issue like this, did y'all ask FDLE to get involved or something like that?
No, we did not, it's basically an employee exceeding his duties, it wasn't on that, they asked me to do it, 'cause I had no history of working with the Humane Society, I am not currently with the Humane Society, and they wanted somebody with, with legal and accounting and finance experience who was totally independent, so that's why they asked me to do it.
Well, the only reason I say is that, and of course, everybody here, all my friends and affiliates, you know, we all read the newspaper, we all realize that it's not a hundred percent accurate all the time, but, you know, and I promise you, all these board members dedicated hundreds and hundreds of hours to this, they've been approached with the same statement, well.
Yes.
You know, if you're not going to outside independent service to issue this, you know, to investigate this, sounds to me like killing someone, and I'm sure they're not accused.
No, what we have, you will be getting it, and, and, and independent external audit for twenty twenty. Yes, and charges have.
You gotta say you didn't come up with that. Oh, my question is, I, and I asked this question, I meant, I, I went out, met with the, and I asked this question. I understand there's two sets of books. Robin said, yes, there is. The board was shocked when she said that, but evidently, the guy that was keeping the records for had two sets of books, so my question is, how do we know how accurate this is?
Well, first off, that's incorrect statement, if there were not two sets of books, I've gone through everything, what he would show, his numbers on a sheet or something like that to management, there was not a set of books, when you talk a set of books, you're talking about a balance sheet, you're talking about a statement of activity, basically a profit and loss, cash flow statement and everything else. And I went back to January one through June, June thirtieth this year, I have gone through every transaction at the shelter. I have gone through every transaction at the shelter. I've gone through every account in their chart of accounts. I've gone through all the bank accounts, everything they have on the books. And so I can assure you of that and my reputation is on that. We did that to give you current numbers. At the end of this year, you will get the audit from Dick Richard Powell, who does it for twenty, for twenty-twenty. You'll have twenty-twenty within a month or two, I believe, Richard told me. And at the end of this year, the, the Humane Society is on a calendar year. You would have the one for twenty-twenty-one. The one he shows you for twenty-twenty covers the end of, of twenty, uh, twenty-nineteen, I mean, shows you, excuse me, twenty-twenty, the end of twenty-twenty is when some of the start of the individual. He will show you on that that there was nothing other than some bad judgments here.
Just so you know, if that's an inaccurate statement, I didn't make that statement.
I made that statement, and I made that statement, and I was deposed and I was asked. And what I saw when I came on as the executive director, going through the, the, you know, books or the, our OneDrive, everything is online, it was, they were titled differently. And so I, of course, that is something that I said, well, what does this mean? I was not the director that did it. It was two thousand eighteen. But I want to assure you that I go through everything because I want to move forward and, and be transparent. And that has always been, you know, my, my goal. We are not trying to hide anything. We, you will get the audit from Richard Powell for two thousand, two thousand twenty. And I have given them access to our OneDrive. So they have access to everything that's in our computer. So where, there's, that was just something that when I was asked, that's what I saw.
You said that was two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
When was Mr. Hoag fired?
He was fired on March first.
Of this year?
Of this year, correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair, just for clair, for clarity, we're still in the budget hearing for the twenty-twenty-two budget. So I think if, if there's a question that the board needs to consider in concert with this hearing is do you want to keep the budget number from last year, which is in the existing budget? Or do you want to increase for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two year based on the first year of request? Any contract that gets negotiated and prepares got to go through the process. It's gonna have to come back. And that's when you could consider later years and any other related issues. So I think the, the thing the board needs to drill down to in this public hearing is just what are you gonna put in this budget tonight?
Well, I'm open to comment. Thank you, thank you, Rob. Thank you, Mr. Rossi.
Well, Mr. Chairman, don't we need to, to vote whether we're gonna add some money to that budget?
Right now, we have a-
Right now, you're in public comment? So you would want to finish public comment, close public comment, and then have discussion?
Is there anybody else want to speak for it?
I'd like to say one thing. My name is Keith Williams. And I'll ask Joel about this, the attorney over here. Right now, without us not being, if we're not in contract and we send officers out to people's houses to pick up a dog or get into confrontation, can we be sued for that?
Yeah, no. I, I think Marlon actually agrees. You're in a month-to-month contract. He pointed out in paragraph five, you have the benefit of the language that says as an independent contractor, you're operating, operating as an agent instrumentality of the county. So you enjoy our blanket of protection. I think what Marlon's saying is in a perfect world, a written contract is far superior than a rollover. But you're gonna take the one that expired in twenty-nineteen. You're gonna show it to the judge. And frankly, the county, we're gonna get sued too. So we're all gonna want to afford ourselves of the, of the sovereign immunity. And again, if, if you read Marlon's letter, I received it this afternoon. But I think he's telling you exactly what's true is, yeah, it's better to have a written contract, but at least you do have the one that expired in twenty-nineteen. So you're probably, I mean, are you bulletproof? None of us are bulletproof. But are you pretty good? You're pretty good.
We can't survive another lawsuit, so that's-
No, yeah, and you definitely don't want, we don't want to get sued.
We're losing money now, and we certainly can't survive that. But I know a lot of, have you all read the depositions that are online by any chance? I mean, I know, I know there's a vet I heard of that's been talking to some of the county commissioners. And if you read that whole deposition, it'll tell the whole truth about what happened and what didn't happen.
Well, we're not here to-
All we're trying to do is straighten things out. We inherited a mess, I'll be honest with you. And we're working day and night to fix it. We're just asking for y'all's help. We want, we want more animal control officers out there. We don't want to put more animals down because of the public. We are a humane society too. We're trying to do both. Any other questions?
Anybody, any question? Thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, board.
So what was the, what was the first year request? A hundred and seventy?
Make sure, are we gonna deliberate? You gotta close the hearing?
I misspoke. It was a hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight, I believe.
So what is that total for a year, for next year?
Add three-seventy to that. I don't have the number in front of me.
This, this is what I think. Her, her actual request is one oh four. Her actual projected losses on the animal service side, per his audit, is ninety-four thousand. Why don't we, now, I, I have some concerns still, but for the purpose of the budget, why don't we allocate the increase into the budget? We're, we're gonna have to, in, in my mind, the citizens of Columbia County, you have a humane society. The citizens of Columbia County, as far as what we fund y'all for, the animal service side. Now, if, if, if that's-
He did. Don't you get close to him?
I'm sorry. Anybody else want, need to want to speak about this here?
And to be clear, it's the whole budget hearing. Does anybody want to say anything else about the budget before he closes it?
Come on.
Sandra Buck Camp, and I live in District Three. My question is, if the revenue from the taxes, from the property tax, is about twenty-four thousand, unless my numbers are wrong, how do we make up the difference between a hundred and sixty-eight something and twenty-four thousand?
I think you're confused, twenty-four million.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, it's twenty-four million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-four. The difference is all these other revenues that we collect. Where'd that sheet go? We had it up here a minute ago. Here we go. So you can see we get a lot of state-funded revenues. We get grants. We have rollover money. The county uses a lot more grants now than we've ever used before, and that pays a lot of the expenditures for like the capital projects and those sorts of things. So we have a large number of different revenue sources, not just property tax.
And Mr. Kraus, it doesn't just reflect revenue, it reflects all of the county's budget.
Right.
That's why it's such a large number.
Anybody else want to speak on the budget? On the budget? Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna close public hearing this time.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Now, going back to the budget as it pertains to animal control. Her ask is one hundred and four thousand dollars. Her projected loss on the animal service side is ninety-four thousand dollars. And, and I, and I do have, I do have more, more things I think we should work out. The, the mission that the county, they have a humane society. The county uses the humane society to provide our animal control services. Now, I'm not saying that doesn't need to change. But if that needs to change, and that's how, that's how the next contract needs to be structured. Because it seems to me we might be paying a little more, just animal control, we're also paying animal services. So if that mission is going to evolve, then that's what needs to reflect in the next contract. So I think what we can do here is we can allocate the one hundred and four thousand dollars or ninety-four, I'm just gonna say give her the one hundred and four. It's only ten thousand more than what she says she lost. That will cover the losses she has with animal service this year. And then this board has to decide, in the, in the very near future, contract-wise, what we're gonna do. Are we gonna change that mission? And if we're gonna change that mission, she obviously has losses. It's gonna be, mean more money. I do want a, a better accounting of these employees and what they're doing. And I mean, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars just on the animal service side, animal, what, how much of that is animal control? It sound like you got two officers out there. Maybe, maybe there's better ways to manage staff and, and money and whatever. I, I want animals in Lake City taken care of properly. But, you know, this mission obviously has, has changed, and we need to make sure our constituents and our taxpayers are good with us changing that mission.
Come on, the mission statement?
No, the mission, this board contracted with the Humane Society for animal control. It's obvious from looking at this, we're not just funding animal control, we're funding control and some services. So in the next contract, if we're gonna continue to do that, that contract needs to reflect that. If we're not gonna continue to do that, we need to do it another way.
Commissioner, it looks like, it looks like to me, the way they want to increase these funded, they're anticipating taking care of more and more animals. At some point, they've got a set of limit, number of animals they're gonna keep. And that's gonna have to be, you know, I mean, you know, at the end of the day, we can't keep twenty thousand animals out here and feed them every day. I mean, you know, just-
The, the thing is, two officers are slamming, sounds like twenty-four employees. Two control officers going out and getting dogs are putting more, twenty-four people are supporting them. You know what I mean? We put two more officers out here, we're gonna need forty-eight, twenty-four more employees to support them. It sounds like, I, I'm just, I'm trying to be more-
I, I, I guess at the end of the day, how much are we willing to spend on keeping these animals?
Well, 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 my, 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 my experience and back when we were loading up dogs every day, taking them out to landfill, it, 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 it bothered me. It didn't bother me back in the old days. I had a dog come around, around my house and catch my chickens. I just take my gun and kill him. But I, I don't even do that anymore. And I, and I, 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 I guess I, I, I got most software in my older years that I would hate to see us go to where we go back in the slaughtering business again with, 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 uh, with animals. It's just, I know it's expensive to do that, but I just don't want the Columbia County to end up being a slaughterhouse anymore.
Commissioner, I agree. I love animals as much as anybody else does. But there's gotta be a limit of what you can, what, what you're willing to be able to take care of and how much you're willing to spend on animal control per year.
And Commissioners, all your points are well-taken, but in, in the purpose of this specific item, it's how much money are we gonna allocate animal control? And I think if we put the hundred thousand increase in there, we can have this debate. And we can debate this whole issue wide open in a public hearing, whatever. And, and we probably will have to at a future date. But for this purpose of what we're doing right now, we're just allocating funds for a budget. And I, I'm-
There's a lot, there's a lot of work that's gotta go into this on the animal control, Humane Society's group and ours. I'm, I'm taking this death, seeing Mr. Rossi dedicating his time to this, just knowing his reputation in the financial world. But I, I would have no problem making a motion to make a one-year extension with the increase of the hundred and five. And then in between now and then, we'll, we'll get, got to go draw that. Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there any comment on the request by the Third Judiciary Circuit Court for the additional seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty-two for a digital court reporter, since the recording service has been under?
I, I make a motion, we allocate those funds.
Second. I got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then board members had requested a change of adding additional money for generators?
Yes, I, I was gonna say, we need to remember the generator for Rich's Community Center. Oh, I think it's very important we create a shelter in the city limits of Lake City for people to go to during an emergency situation. I didn't, I really wasn't aware we didn't have one. But I think it's very important we have somebody, have somewhere for the people in the city to go to. So I'll make a motion that we fund the generator for Rich's Community Center.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I would request one more motion then before we go to the recommended motion, that you authorize the county manager and staff to get with Dick Powell and take these increases in expenditures and balance them against the revenues so that we maintain the current balance and do not change the overall funding level of the county. So the budget stays the same. We just, if you're gonna put more money in expenditures, I've got to find money somewhere to cover those costs. That's what I'm asking you to give us that discretion.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor? Thank you, Dave.
And then the final motion would be to adopt Resolution Number twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one R-38, adopting the final budget appropriations and reserves for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-two in the amount of one sixty-eight, or, um, let me say, let me reword that. To adopt Resolution Number twenty-twenty-one R-38, adopting the final budget as amended with appropriations and reserves for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two in the amount of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-two, I'm sorry, one hundred and sixty-eight million, five hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one.
Subpo, second.
It's been a long night.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Phew, deep breath. All right. The next item is Resolution Number twenty-twenty-one R-35, Sweetwater Apartments, Phase Two. The folks from the project are here. If you wish to have them speak, basically, you talk to them on September second. Basically, talk, telling you about their project. They're asking to build an eighty-four unit complex on six point five acres off of Davis Street. They were asking for a three million dollar low-interest construction loan. And Resolution twenty-twenty-one R-35 merely expresses the board's support for the project. It does not necessarily appropriate any funds at this time.
Board, I would like-
The attorney also has a-
It, it also directs staff to negotiate any possible loans, the agreements and things like that. Just making that clear, that's, there's a directive in there.
Board, I would just like to say, I've done some pretty deep research into this, this week, this past week. And I, for one, can't go along with loaning this three million dollars. I've talked to some of the banking people and some different ones. And, you know, at the end of the day, if the bank won't loan this money because it's a bad risk, I don't think the county should loan it either. At this time, I, I can, I'll hear from y'all, but-
Doesn't, doesn't this motion, this motion doesn't commit to actually loaning them money? This motion moves it forward so they can bring back the information we asked them at the last meeting?
Correct.
So you're not, you're not committing to approving any loan agreement at this time? You're just allowing this to move forward? They can get their federal funds? See if they get their federal funds? They may not even get them. And then at that time, we can debate the merits of-
Okay, so if they get, if they, if they get it, if they get that funding, and then we agree at that point, I seen a gentleman start heading that way, but we agree at that point, that we're not gonna give it to them, taxpayers' money. Again, and, but, and me and Mr. McCollum talked about it, me and Miss, Miss Cole, it's, I, I, I support the, the idea a hundred percent. I just don't want to overcommit ourselves to the point where, because I'm still not convinced, ain't nobody been able to explain to me, if we do this tonight, and then we say, whenever, you know, we're not gonna do it, is your project dead? Yes or no? Your project dead, correct? So basically, what you're looking for is a commitment that we are gonna commit to the man, right? One shaking yes, the other one shaking no. I'm confused.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm, I agree with Commissioner, with that the letter is a, a, is not authorizing the money, but at this time, but it put in motion to use a letter from the county saying that we, we are committed to this project for them to help them secure the loans that they need to come up with the money that they got to raise. We're just saying that we are committed to this project. And they had said if they needed the county money, it would be the last money that they would ask for. Did I hear that right?
Yes, I think you said it right. My name is Rodrigo Paredes. I work for the development company that applied for funding for this development and Florida Housing Finance Corporation. So I represent Housing Trust Group, that's the name of our company. We are partners of the CDC of the county. Mr. McKinnon is here also, so if you want to ask him any questions. So, so I think that what, what we are asking here is exactly what the city attorney, county attorney said, which is just to pre-allocate or pre, pre, have to just show a disposition that the county is willing to support this development if we pass every single underwriting item, every single compliance item that you guys may have, every term, every condition. So, you know, all the conditions and terms are, are to be negotiated, and, and the county attorney is, is asking to negotiate that for you, for you guys. What we did is that we went to Florida Housing Finance Corporation, and we got a preliminary allocation of housing tax credits. This is, you know, eighties program for, from, from the Reagan administration. Under that program, we already have a preliminary allocation of about seven point five million for this project of, of housing tax credit equity. And then we have another pre-allocation of five million from the state, the Sadowski Funds, State Department Incentive Loans. And we also have a couple of other sources that are minor, four hundred thousand grand from the state, two hundred thousand grand from the city. And all of that together is not enough, unfortunately, to finance the, the development. If we don't have the, the extra gap that we need, just the development is undersourced and it's not going to be feasible. So what, what, what we're doing right now is we're going through the underwriting process with the state so that they can finish allocating all the sources, both federal and, and state. And that way, and, and, and the same thing the county would, would do. So the county would allow us to just be going through the, finalizing this underwriting process. If everybody's on the same page, you know, at the day of closing is that, you know, everybody, all the documents get signed, everybody's satisfied, the development starts two weeks after. So it's a thirteen million dollar build, we, we estimate and, you know, it's, it's going to be you know, the state, all, all, all the state of Florida has a lot of problems with housing, as you can imagine, because, you know, it's just not affordable. Everybody's overburdened, paying more than fifty percent of their, of their income in rent. What affordable housing is, is that you're allowed to, you, you have something that, that is quality development, that it looks nice. You guys can see all our developments we do. We've done twenty in the last five years. Lake, you, you can go to Lake County, to Hernando County, to Paul County. We've done several developments in all those counties. You can see that how beautiful our developments are, but yet the rents are affordable. And we run background checks on our personnel, on our, on our, on our tenants, you know, criminal checks and all that. So, you know, we, we, we give something for the, to the community that is very well loved at the end of the day.
Which we, we seen all that in the previous conversation. I mean, I'm sorry, presentation, it was great. But just as an example for myself and the public. Are you familiar with Wind Song out here?
With what?
The Wind Song project?
No, I'm, I'm sorry.
Mr. McCollum, you are. So is this the same type of project? Is this, was that funding out there in all the years of your research? Was that built on the principle of something like this?
Certainly it's affordable housing that they use. They use state dollars. They use federal dollars to develop those units out there.
Okay, they did. Okay. Okay, so let's cut through the chase. Because the predecessor before you got here, I think that's where he kind of got everybody a little shook. What guarantees is that who's going to pay the county back the money? You or who? I already know the answer. I just wanted you to say it again.
So the, the development is, is going to have a lot, the mortgage with the state for the five million, the mortgage with you guys for the three million and another for the bonds, which is probably a million dollars or something like that. So the development is going to be worth in fifteen years enough to be able to, to guarantee everybody to be paid back. At year fifteen, what usually happens with this type of developments is that they get refinanced. So that everybody, all the, all the, all the mortgages that come to maturity get paid. And, and, and that's what's usually the case here. So, so yeah, we are, our company is going to be the borrower. Well, the partnership between the CDC and us and, and then, but, but, you know, the guarantee is the actual property.
Like, like he said previously, he's going to pay us interest, pay the taxpayers of Columbia County a minimal amount of interest for ten, fifteen years, correct? Whatever the agreement was.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Not trying to put words in your mouth.
No, and, and I apologize that the prior presenters didn't come again because one, one was very sick and so I'm, I'm just replacing them. I'm not entirely sure about all the conversations you've had, but what I can tell you is that, yes, interests are going to be paid. The, 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 the three million are going to be paid back. My understanding is that those three million come from the American Recovery Plan Act money, which is, you know, COVID relief type of money. So it's in a way that it's, it's going to be money against, you know, talking about all the, the village of, of, of governments that are helping this development go through. You know, we have federal government, state money and city and county money to be able to make this a reality. So I think that we're, we're going to pay it back and we're going to pay with interest. So I think it's a, everybody, you know, it's a win-win for everybody.
I've been in a bunch of real estate contracts and I know never one like this and I know you're a lot smarter than I am. But I, I just, I support the theory of what we're doing here. We've already paid for, for the property. Now, that's just a small part of this big cake here, but I, I have to agree with Mr. Ford here. You know, we're asking, you're asking us as board members to tie the hands of future board members. I'm not going to be here as long as Ron Williams. And I don't think this, if my calculations are right, what you just told me and what I did, my previous math, I'm not a real good mathematician, but I'm good enough to know, I don't think if Robbie stays here as long as Ron, I don't think he's going to see the payback either. I mean, that's the way the math works. Can't argue that. And I, I just, somebody smarter than myself and Joe Forman, we got to get a good, good, sure enough real estate attorney. I mean, something, somebody's got to prove to me how we, I, I, I still don't have a full grasp of it. But the grasp I got, I'm uncomfortable.
Well, and, and as we talked last time, you know, these things are very complicated. They're very heady. You do have to spend a lot of time to really get your hands around them. Things that I do understand now, it's a one percent interest only loan for the fifteen year term and then it matures. So the three million has to be paid. And I have questions about our position. You know, the state's going to be in front of us. So if there is a default during that fifteen year period, where's the three million going to come from? We don't know what the nature of the default. We have no idea what the nature of the default might be. It could be a destruction of the premises. And then, you know, there's insurance proceeds insufficient to pay all the obligations. We don't, those are things we'll have to keep up with. I'm not saying any of it's insurmountable, but I think you're right, Commissioner Murphy. It is more complicated than just a three million dollar loan and pays back in fifteen years.
And this is, this is how you have to look at it and this is how I look at it is, you know, you're investing three million dollars of taxpayer money to get a, a pretty big investment from the state to do affordable housing. So if you look at it like we're loaning a project three million dollars and it's going to be fifteen years before we get it paid back, oh, well, that's how you're looking at it. But if you're looking at it as, you know, our federal government is spending our kids in the, you know, in the debt, they can't pay. And, and one of the things that, that, that they allocated ARPA funds for was affordable housing. If you're looking at this as an affordable housing project, it's a need for our county. It's a need for economic development. If you're looking at it from that aspect, then you're investing three million dollars into that. So I guess it's just how you look at it.
If I may say something to answer some of the comments, I think that one important aspect is the money from the county is going to come in after we've built. So, you know, the, the, the idea of the loan is just to be able to pay back some of the bonds that are going to be issued by the state, which are tax exempt. But bottom line, the risk of the state, of the county is going to be practically zero and I'll, and I'll tell you why. The concern about how is it going to be paid if something, you know, if, if there's a destruction of the property. There's, of course, the state is not going to allow us to, to even give any money, to, to give us any money if without a proper insurance. So we're going to be backed, we're going to have fully insured prop development. We're required to have it for fifty years. And, 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 you know, there's going to be all the, all, everything, everything that the county, that the state and the, and, and the federal government are going to make us do to guarantee their loans, that the county can have the same. Okay, yes, it's, it's, it's the last priority probably. It's after the state. But the reality is that the development is going to be able to absorb the, you know, all those loans to be paid back because it's going to be worth more than, than eight million dollars in fifteen years.
When he, when he was here last time, we asked for basically a copy of a contract, some information paperwork. Have we received any?
Yeah, I got, I got a little bit of paperwork and I reviewed that and again, in, in preparing the resolution that you're looking at right now. I did want to point out the resolution expresses your support for the project, direct staff to continue to work, which we already started doing on looking at these documents. And then the last provision is, is under no circumstances is to be construed as a binding commitment, right? So all you're basically doing is saying, hey, we, we think it's a project worth looking into. We want our staff to continue to do that. But under no circumstances are we obligated to do this.
Have we seen any paperwork that shows they've been approved for any loan yet?
I've only seen a sample loan agreement. And, and I think, and I think that's what they're asking for. If we just, if we pass the resolution, let's just say we're, we're committed, they can go down the road and, and we'll find out if they get the federal loan. Now, they, they, they secure both these loans, this federal and state loan and say, we're bringing a seventeen million dollar project. How much is thirteen million dollar project?
Yeah, it's an eighteen, we're calculating about eighteen million dollars and, and yeah, we, we participated in a competitive process against probably two hundred developments to get this money awarded, to get the five million awarded plus four hundred thousand of, of, of grant from the state plus the eight million dollars in tax credit.
So you're approved for that now?
We have an invitation to underwrite from Florida Housing, which is practically very similar to what your, your city, your county attorney is saying, which is, yeah, we, they, they pre-allocated this fund with many conditions, which, you know, go through underwriting, get everything done. Once they approve the credit underwriting report, the Florida Housing is going to issue to their board and the board approves it. Then we get an actual binding commitment from the state. But it's, it's pretty similar. The, the reality is that once you win the, the competitive process, you know, that, that many states, many counties in, in the state of Florida participate on. You know, you're, you're pretty much done so long you have enough resources, enough sources to cover all the costs. Where we are right now having a gap, so without the three million dollars, we cannot bring all the other fourteen million dollars we have pre-allocated to this development.
I want to ask a question. You said that development will be built before the three million is, is that what you were saying?
Yes. So we're going to finish construction in twenty twenty-three, let's say. And after we've finished construction and the, the, the money, the three million from the county is going to be drawn when we convert to a perm loan. It's a very, so we all, all we need is to just to pay back the construction, the bonds issued from the state. Which is going to be like eight million dollars of construction bonds.
And will this, will this development, will this development be property taxes exempt or will y'all pay taxes?
We are going to pay taxes. We are a family. It's not going to be an elderly tax exempt, no.
We don't see, we don't receive the tax dollars though. Is that what I was told in the last meeting?
It is in the CRA dish. So any areas of valuation property in the CRA district goes to the CRA.
Correct. Doesn't come to BCC, goes CRA.
I just hope this, this board of commissioners be as passionate about providing affordable housing for the kids as you are about providing a football stadium for them. Eighty-four families, eighty-four taxpaying families we were provided housing for in this development. When we talked about taxpayers, everybody's going to this complex will be taxpayers, will be voters.
Well, I think we've proved our commitment. We bought the property.
Yes, you did. That's all we need. Commissioner Murphy asked a question. Will the commitment of the county for this project release the revenue that we've already made application for from the state, federal government? Yes, we have a three million dollar gap. We asked the county to help us out with this. You've already supported this project. This is the final step. This is the last step. We need a letter that you approve this project and you will support it and fund it. Then we can go to Tallahassee, we can go to the federal government and secure those other tax exempt loans and sale dollars that we got from the state. We are a small county. This is the first small county development that's been funded through Florida Housing Finance. Usually these dollars go to larger counties. But we were blessed to get this approved. All we need is the gap funding. That's all we need.
Just, just to address the initial comment from Chairman about if we cannot go get the money from, from a bank. I understand that your comment, but the reality, the reason why these developments are, are, are more challenged, more challenged to, to, to do, it's because you, we have restricted rent. So that's what makes it affordable. So our rents are restricted to people who earn sixty percent of the area median of the county. So if you, fifty percent, and, and in this case, fifty percent of the area median of the county, it's, you know, if, if you do the math and you have to take and you're only paying a third of that, you're paying five hundred dollars a month.
You hit on my question right there. You're going to pay the county one percent interest. A bank right now is, is not a whole lot more interested. Why, why don't you go to the bank for this three million dollars?
Well, because, because a mortgage with a bank is four per percent, you know. The reality is that, that, you know, the, the, the sale loan, for example, with the state is like one percent interest only, soft. So what, what we're offering the county, just the county, it's, it's better than the deal with the state. Because if we don't have this deal, just the development doesn't go forward. I mean, I, I.
But am I correct? You're wanting seventeen years to pay this money back? Am I correct?
Well, the maturity is going to be, yes, in fifteen years.
The bank's not going to give you seventeen years to pay it back.
Well, fifteen years after you guys provided the money, fifteen, after the money goes into us.
It was after we give it to them.
It's still fifteen years.
Yes, fifteen.
Will you receive any money back?
No, you'll make monthly payments.
There's going to be some, some, the way it's structured right now is that there's, there's going to be a little bit cap, it's going to be capital, a little bit of capital payments with this one percent. So there is some, there is some, some capital going back, but not much. The reality is that.
Interest only payments.
Yes. You'll pay off in fifteen years.
There's a lot of moving pieces. So, but, but the, the, the reality is that how it works is.
It's basically a line of credit with interest payments.
What's that?
I said it's basically a three million dollar line of credit with interest only payments for fifteen years is what, basically what it is.
Pretty much. So, so the, the idea with the, all, all we need to do right now is hire the, the architect, get the plans done, get the development, you know, bid it out with contractors so that we have a real number. Then everybody underrode, you know, appraisers and studies and reports and then we get to find.
I would extend the building cost just real quick, because I know it's dragging on. What happens if it comes in twenty percent of the budget? What happens then?
Then, then we don't do the deal and, and we don't therefore go with, we, 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 we're not going to close on any loan with you guys. So we're not, we're not taking the money from you guys.
So do you come back to the county for another meeting?
No. No, I mean, we know that, you know, everybody is struggling with money and there's a lot of needs.
The resolution, I'm sorry, the approval of the resolution two thousand twenty-one, I'm not, there, there's a lot of legal stuff in there and, you know, do I support expressing support for this? I'll vote for that all night long. But that resolution number, because I'm not a hundred percent, I don't understand all the, the fine tuning in there. I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that. But and what Mr. McCollum just said, McCollum just said, you know, it's either a make or break. It's either one. You know, you're, you're, and I'm with Toby. I, you know, I think there needs to be a commitment to affordable housing, but, you know, should we? I, I've just got struggled with it. That's all I'll say.
Well, and I'll say, I'm, I'm, I sit on the, on the homeless coalition and affordable housing is a topic that comes up every single meeting. And it, it is, it is a major need and you do have ARPA money. One purpose of that ARPA money is acceptable purposes, affordable housing. And I look at, I look at it like this. If, if, if Mr. Kraus came back to us, you know, next week and said, hey, guys, the, the feds are going to give us a grant for, you know, seventeen million dollars to build a housing project, but, but it, it's not a whole grant. Now your match is three million dollars. Would we do it? Would we do it? I mean, knowing that's a need and knowing we're flush with COVID cash. Now, I, I understand the board is skeptical about some of the terms of loan and they still got a lot of hoops to jump through. But, you know, if, if we let them go down the road and they bring us back a project that's sound and you are committed to affordable housing and you do have ARPA money that not county tax. housing, and you do have ARPA money, that not county taxpayer dollars, but, well, I guess it is in the federal scheme of things, but they're going to spend it somewhere, and you want to put ARPA, ARPA money toward that purpose, is this not a good way to put money toward that purpose? Because, I mean, I'm telling you, we have not allocated ARPA money yet, but, I mean, we got affordable housing is one issue, we've got a broadband issue, we got, on top of all our other issues, so, I mean, and who knows, maybe there is a, a federal funding source the county can get, another source to offset this, but we won't, nothing happens until, until they go forward and see if the money comes through. Nothing.
And, and, and before we give them money, it's built, you know, so it's not like we're going to run into, you know. I'm as nervous as y'all, it's three million dollars.
But if we, if we commit to this money, then they get everything they see, then all of a sudden, they're at the, uh, ninth inning, you see something you don't like. We're the SOBs for killing the project.
But, but I think, I think, I think too, it, to, to that, to that question, if the state, we're committing three million, the state's committing, what, five?
They're loaning.
They're, they're, same thing, loan.
They want our money to pay the state back their money.
And we're, and we're loaning too.
Yeah.
But, but the state's committing a bigger stake than we are, the feds are committing a bigger stake than we are.
They got a big bank.
No, no, but, but let me, let me clarify what I said, uh, that the five million from the state stays there forever for, for, for fifteen years as well.
The bond, so you're having to pay back.
The bonds, I, we get eight million of, of construction bonds, that then are going to be one million in the permanent source when we convert to a permanent, so, so we need to pay that difference of seven million. And, and that's where, 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 where we have the gap. We, we, we need permanent source, not construction source. Construction source, we have everything we need, but not permanent, and that's where where the three million come in. But, but, but we're not going to be, we're not here asking for, for the commitment as the, as the city, county attorney is saying, we are just trying to make sure that we can pull all the pieces together, move forward with the plans. Once everything has been looked at, carefully negotiated, there's going to be three attorneys from, from the state, uh, Housing Agency, uh, the county attorney is going to be involved in the calls if he wants to. We can all come together, close, start construction. But we're, we're not making you, uh, you know, we're not here to, to say, hey, you committed this, and then you, you backed off. No, we're here to just ask for your support and just make you feel more comfortable in the future, that everything's going to be perfect, and taking care.
Okay, thank you. Well, what, what, what are we doing here? What do y'all want to do?
I'm going to motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-one R dash thirty-five, second.
I have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Motion secured. Approved.
Yeah.
Praise the Lord. Thank you, Jesus, thank you. Thank you so much, Commissioner. I just want to say one thing, that affordable housing is more difficult to do than market rate, for the simple reason that it's subsidized. There are some people going to be paying four hundred dollars a month for a two-bedroom apartment. That's unheard of in Columbia County. We got senior citizens that's on social security, they can't afford a decent place to live at a market rate unit.
Thank you, thank you, Leslie. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right, let's move on then.
So the next item is the, um, contract that we do every year with the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council for planning services at thirty-five thousand dollars per year.
I may reapprove.
I approve, uh, North Central Florida Regional Planning Council and local government comprehensive planning services in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
The next item is another contract with North Florida Regional Planning Council. This is for the annual monitoring of hazardous waste removal. It is nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars.
So move. Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the next is a revision of job descriptions. We gave you three job descriptions. We would like to amend the Director of Information Technology, one, to be a pay grade one forty-six, and we would like to amend the Desktop Support Specialist position to be a pay grade one thirty-six. They were erroneously in the packet at a different pay grade.
Whoa, 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 that's right.
So what the, um, if you keep the, um, Information Technology Director pay grade one forty-six, that would put him at the same grade as your other directors, such as Building and Zoning, such as Landscaping and Parks, such as, uh, Operations Superintendent, um, and Solid Waste Director, and Tourism Development Executive Director.
When y'all do this, you know, you put the, and we had, we discussed this three and a half years ago. I have no problem with what we're sitting here talking about, but why, why don't we run from the numbers? You put pay grade this, pay grade, put a real number out there.
The real number for the pay grade is.
Yeah, but no, that's not for the public, but, you know.
I'm quit arguing, uh, but go ahead.
The minimum salary at that pay grade is sixty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
And what's your justification?
That pay grade, it's the same pay grade that we have other department heads.
We just give forty-five hundred dollars to them. We got, the rest of the money you left out of here.
This is just the position description, it's not the salary the person would receive. This is, all right, currently, your IT Director is called a Network Specialist, he is not a Department Head. This creates the position of a Department Head. He would cease being a non-exempt, become exempt, and he would be paid according to the Department Head position. For I can put him in a Department Head position, you have to create the position itself. That is what this is doing.
And that's the way you should do it.
I move that we approve position description revisions as amended.
Second. Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Oppose?
All right, the next one is the Hazard Mitigation Grant, which we've talked about many, many times. These are the properties we've got left to buy. It'll total approximately eight hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred. I say approximately because as you can see, there are second appraisals pending on a couple properties, so it may go up a little. Um, we're asking for you to approve to purchase these properties.
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I wish Mr. Roundtree had made it through the meeting, he.
David, while we're right there, and I'm beating a dead horse here, because it goes on deaf ears, this guy that we got appraising these houses from Fort Water, we continue to use him within this relaunch?
The second appraisals are not using him, we have stopped using him, he is no longer used by the county.
Okay, are we still using the grant manager? That apparently we can't get anything out of either?
We currently are still using the grant manager. We are setting up a meeting as you requested, uh, requested, uh, dates. He sent me dates today, and I need to get back with you and see when you're available.
All right.
Finally, I'm sorry.
I know, yeah, I, I did see this, and who, who, which properties are we buying here? Are we buying Mr. Roundtree's, finally?
Yes, we're, you're approving to purchase Mr. Roundtree, Tiffany Williams, Annette Fay Bullard, uh, which actually, I believe, yeah, Annette Fay Bullard, that is Russ Adler's sister, um, Deborah Reckers, Shirley Weaver, uh, Ben Ellis's Florida Housing Trust House on Fulton Place, and James Gray Property on Ascena Terrace.
Those are the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven property.
Yep. You've already purchased, uh, Mr. Adler's property, so that's a total of eight properties under this grant. That will never flooding, that will never have houses flooded again.
David, if you don't mind, real brief, I know we've been here a long time, but brief the board on where we're at on this mobile home situation.
Oh, Mr. Adler?
Yeah.
We just received the titles from Lake City Title yesterday, so it will be on your next agenda to declare the, uh, trailer surplus and to allow us to dispose of those trailers at that time.
I guess my question would be, if we bought this mobile home from Mr. Adler, and we're declaring it surplus property, are we just giving it away at that point, or are we auctioning it off, or if the, if the, I mean, what are we doing with it?
At the end of the day, you'll be declaring all of these properties that we're buying as surplus, and then you will have to make a decision as to whether to auction them, demolish them, or dispose of them. And a lot will depend on.
So we are declaring it surplus property at this time.
So like, last time we did this, when we, um, purchased a mobile home from a former fire chief, uh, we actually made the decision to sell it. So we bought it, we declared a surplus, we sold it to some guy in, uh, Live Oak, and we declared the sale of it as program income going back into the project. Most of the houses we demolished, we just tore down. You have that option once you declare it surplus. It's your property, if you say it has no value, it's surplus property, we just need to get rid of it.
Yeah, the ones that, uh, we bought in Swannavanna State, uh, we just demolished the old, the mobile home, they had an old particle flow in it, and once they got wet.
But we would have to do it through the correct processes.
And, but the correct process, justice, is the correct process, is we've been waiting for two and a half to three months on trying to get an answer from FEMA, correct?
That is correct, but we still did not have title.
Fact number two.
But we still did not have title till yesterday.
Okay, you're, you're exactly right, but leading up to getting this title, it could be a done deal. You sleep this much, investing in the world, you're, you're, you're broke, you know, and, and I'm going to go ahead and say it, David, the grant manager that's been handling this, she's abusing the contract, is, am I correct? Let's not say the contract, is she doing her job? Put that real simple.
I don't think that's, I don't think, oh, they maybe should.
I say it, no, hell no. You know, I'm telling you guys, we really need to look at this program again. Hold on, man, I got the floor. We need to really look at this program, because I'm telling you, the taxpayers, these people are going, Ron can speak better than I can, he's got, had a pile of houses in his district over the years that's been flooded. And my point is, these people are already going through one of the worst times of their life, and we're dealing, Mr. Roundtree just left there four years, guys, to buy a house, and we're sitting there worried about if we're going to legally do this and legally do that? Good gosh, y'all, y'all better not never invest money, because you're going to lose your butt, I'm telling you. Because I'm telling you, Columbia County, people that's on this program have been shafted, and you can quote me on that. They've been spit on, stomped on, and walked over top of. This ain't right, that them people are sitting here going through what they're going through.
This is a very.
David can sit right here and prove the fact, I still got the floor. We've got, we, we go to the low bidder, we fired this guy, David did away with him on Mr. Roundtree's deal, because he was incompetent of making a reasonable, timely valuation of this house. We, we get rid of him off of there, and then if we don't put him out to work next time, another job? That's crazy. That's acidine. And I'm, I'm done dealing with this, but I'm, I'm telling you, we need to really look at this program, and if we got to send somebody to Harvard and, that works for Columbia County Board of Commissioners, this can't happen again, guys. This ain't right. This cannot happen. This trailer we're talking about never had a drop of water in it, it destroyed the air conditioning ducts and everything, this is a reasonable home, and all's the man is simply asking for, tell me what I can do where I can go on and make my, the rest of my move.
Well, he's been paid, hasn't he?
Yeah, he's been paid, Rocky, but he's been dealing with this, or he's been dealing with that one right there, going down there in Florida for se, for three years.
I guess, I guess my question would be, if the man's been paid for his land in his house, what else matters to him?
All he's, that's exactly, all he's asking is that, can I receive this? He just wants a yes or no answer. We've been waiting three months for that.
But he's been paid, right? So what is the crush on, whether he gets the answer of the house? The house belongs to us now, right? I, I'm just trying to understand what you're.
What he's waiting on is that our incompetence in government, all he's been asking for is three months, can I, can y'all give this to me, or can you not? Let me know where I go on.
Just tell him no, and just be done with it.
You can't do that, Rocky.
Why? We bought it, right? We bought it, right? Did we buy the house or not?
What do we do with, but David just said, right?
So wait a minute, I'm a little confused. Did we buy the house?
We bought the house, and now we're going to do what with it?
What David just said. Are you not listening?
We bought the house, we own, the house had a double wide and a single wide, so we have three titles to the properties on this house. They are county assets. Before I can dispose of a county asset, I have to have the board declare it surplus, and then decide how you want to dispose of it. That's how we do county assets.
I guess I'm confused, because if we bought the house and the land.
So what is he waiting on? What is he in a hurry with?
I wouldn't. There ain't enough damn hours in the rest of the night to get, this is my point, guys. If you were dealing with one of your constituents that's been through this BS all these years, you, you'd look at it a different manner, and that's all I challenge y'all to do. Please look at these things when you put in for these grants.
So I guess, are we going to buy Mr. Roundtree's house, say, give it back to him?
No.
No.
Okay, so.
You can't.
I understand what you're talking about. I'm buying the man's house, and he wants it back?
It's a mobile home, the man, instead of us buying it and destroying it, he would like, he would like us to give it to him, and he would move it.
No, no, we can't give it back to him. No, no.
But we can auction it, maybe?
Yeah.
And he's got a chance to buy it. That's all he's been asking for three months, Robbie. That's all he's been asking. If auctioning it is legal, and that's a legal means of getting rid of it, he'll just have to be at the auction. That's always been asking, Robbie. That's my point.
I guess.
We got a lot of competence here, but he's still been paid, so he can move.
Auction is legal, as long as the income from the auction is program income.
All right, let's move, let's move on. That's good. I, I understand your, your frustration, I mean, I do, but if the man's been paid, then I, I, I don't know what. That's what I'm about to mean.
No, I'm going to know, know, hell no. That's an ignorant statement, Mr. Glover, because you don't know what the heck you're talking about, just like usual.
Well, just, okay, let's move on, let's move on.
All right, so we've created a CARES Business Assistance Program, uh, application form that's online that people can fill out, but you need to approve the policies and guidelines so that we can start the program. So, we've confirmed that six counties across the state, and only six counties have confirmed that they're going to do small business assistance, the rest of them may, but don't know. Most counties are not spending their money yet. Uh, you, of course, uh, were not planning to use this as ARPA money, you were planning to use this as the money we were reimbursed from the CARES program. Uh, previously, previous boards have talked about that, you being used for jail debt, uh, whichever this board wants is fine with us. Um, so we developed the online application for the Business Assistance Program. We're proposing awards of up to twenty-one thousand, depending on the number of employees. This is your choice, you can go with that or you can change it. We're also saying that it must exist prior to March first, which has existed prior to COVID, and it has to currently still be operating. We're targeting, we're recommending that you target businesses of fifty employees or less, and that can include the owner of the business, and we're also recommending, uh, that you put this assistance for businesses that are in Columbia County, and that can demonstrate the loss due to COVID. Uh, the actual entire list of criteria was in your agenda packet, and we just need to know if, are you happy with this? Do you want to change any of it? How do you want to proceed?
I'm fine with it. To give everybody a little something, from one to fifty.
Well, I, I have, I have one concern with it, and, and, and that is in the case of one of my constituents who contacted me, who did not, for whatever reason, take advantage of our first round of business, uh, relief, but she's had losses since then, and in that, and in that first round, we, we gave out up to forty thousand dollars, everyone a restriction on employees, it was like, you proved the loss, and, and, and we got it. This particular person owns a, a hair salon, so her stuff would be on books, and she certainly she certainly, only hair, hair salon had a significant loss due to COVID, and she wouldn't be covering her this, or she would be covered, but not as much as what we did in the first round.
Do we want to do forty thousand again?
Well, no, forty thousand?
We did forty thousand in the first round.
Well, I don't, we don't have as much money to take down, and I probably won't have as many business apply, but that, you're talking about the maximum is forty thousand.
The last time we did this, we had a maximum of forty thousand.
How much money did we spend?
The last time we did this, we had a maximum of forty thousand.
How much money did we spend last time?
Uh, what was it, seven million? Somewhere around seven million.
Seven and a half million.
You're gonna do it from one to ten, forty thousand, what are you gonna do for thirty, one to fifty?
Yeah, we, we didn't have that break, that, the employee breakdown last time.
We did not have the breakdown last time, that is correct.
We had, we had you proved the loss.
So you could say, doesn't matter how many employees you have, if you have the loss, you can get up to X amount.
I think we...
That is absolutely...
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm good with, I'm good with, yeah, I'm good with staying twenty-one thousand. Let's just, let's take the employee requirement out so at least she can, you know, get some of her losses back.
I think so.
Because it doesn't matter, if you lost it, you lost it.
Yeah, because it don't matter if you got five employees, if you lost eighty thousand dollars, you lost eighty thousand dollars.
That's right.
Yeah. What? All right, so I need a motion.
What, 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 what the, what the line going where?
Move that we approve the...
Okay, let me clarify what we're talking about, Mr. Williams. What we want to do, Mr. Williams, is do away with the one through ten, eleven through thirteen, one, and just make it twenty-one thousand dollars maximum, no matter what, how many employees you have.
All right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. We approve the, uh, the CARES Business Assistant Program with the amendment that the employee, number of employee requirement come out, and it's straight up to one, up to twenty-one thousand for the relief.
Okay, I got a motion.
Second.
Second. Got a second? All in favor?
Aye. So we will begin, uh, probably accepting applications sometime next week. We'll bring it your next board meeting. Uh, I think we're gonna need to do a budget amendment, uh, because it'll be October, and we did not budget it in next year's budget, so we'll bring you a budget amendment at your October, first of October meeting, appropriating that money in next year's budget so that you can actually expend it.
Okay, on the consent agenda, what are we pulling off of it? Number three, you said?
Uh, number three was already done.
We just done away with number three, right?
And Mr. Murphy requested number six, I believe.
Number six, on the Eagle's Wing.
Yeah, Tim wanted to discuss number six.
And myself and David, uh, had a discussion about this the other day, and we asked this question last time, but we just got, we don't have nothing, there's no audit here. There, there's no checks and balances, and we had this discussion before, am I correct, David? I mean, they've, they've sent us...
So even if you approve the contract, if they don't comply with the contract, if it says in the contract they have to provide those documents, and they don't, we would not cut them a check, or I assume Jay would not cut them a check.
So basically what you're saying, if they don't comply with the rules, they're not gonna get the money, even if we approve it.
Right, but you have to make sure those terms are in the contract, and you're good with that.
And what was their amount that we were dealing with on that? What are they asking for?
Thirty-four thousand or something?
Two thousand's on my mind.
Yeah.
Little over twenty-four thousand dollars.
But David, but, but I, I went along with this last year, if you'll go back and check your minutes. And I asked for an audit that, you know, an audit.
And I don't believe that...
We haven't had one.
They have not provided.
Just want to make that point clear, and I think everybody at that time...
So we can hold it, we can table it?
So David, we're gonna, we're gonna ask you for this audit, and you go, before they get this money, we're gonna see this audit, right?
Well, what we can do is we can table this until the audit arrives.
David, you don't have to table it. We just said if they don't get the audit, they don't present us an audit, does the board look at, they don't get the money.
Contingent upon an audit.
Yeah, contingent with on audit.
And we agree with it. As long as that's in the motion, is that in the motion?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion contingent on a received approved audit acceptable by this board before we release any future funds to, on Eagle's Wing.
So we will not execute the final grant, the final agreement until the audit arrives.
Correct.
Okay, I got a motion, second on that.
Second.
A motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
That was all I had.
That, that's it, right? Okay, public comment. Anybody got any public comment? Two minutes, come on. State your name for the record again, Ms. Buckcamp.
Thank you, I will. Sandra Buckcamp, District Three. I have two comments. One pertains to the county employees and the fact that the lowest paid county employee does not make at least fifteen dollars an hour. I think our county employees deserve fifteen dollars an hour, and I know you're working on the budget or probably have approved it, but I really think they need to be increased to fifteen dollars an hour, period. Second comment is very personal from two issues. One, the homeless coalition, of which I have been a member for about five years, and the second is pertaining to Swan Valley Transit Authority for the disadvantaged. I have been a member of that committee advisory board for over ten years. Now, if one of you commissioners are assigned to attend those meetings to represent the county of Columbia, I think you need to be there. Now, if you can't come, then you need to advise the chairman and have him appoint or send someone else, because the county needs to be represented in both of those areas, especially Swan Valley Transit, uh, for the disadvantaged. We could not hold, we had a meeting yesterday, it's only held four times a year, so not planning ahead is rather foolish on your part if you accept the challenge, if you accept that duty as part of your responsibility being a commissioner. You don't need to feel like the Lone Ranger because Swan Valley, I mean Swan County did not send their commissioner, he arbitrarily said he wasn't coming. That is not fair. The counties get money for your residents, and you need to represent the counties, especially Columbia County, because we have the largest of the three, which is Columbia County, Hamilton County, and Swan County. We have the largest contribution of ridership, and consequently, we as a county give the SVTA more money than any of the other counties. So please, get in the habit of showing up so we can conduct business and that we don't have to keep delaying and delaying and delaying. It is not fair to the counties, it's not fair to us who serve on the counties, on those boards, because we do this voluntarily.
Thank you, Ms. Buckcamp.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Come on up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have just one thing, it also concerns Swan Valley Transit. Recently, Swan Valley, Swan Valley Transit Authority, sorry, we're all getting a little tired, Swan Valley Transit Authority passed its budget illegally. I don't think the two county commissioners on that board did anything intentional. However, the Florida statutes require that budgets be passed by resolution.
Say that again, budgets be passed by...
By resolution. You know, you've just done it here tonight.
I, I got it, yeah.
And you did it...
I just said I was talking what you said.
No, no problem, and you did it two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Uh, Swan Valley Transit Authority Board did not pass its budget by resolution. The meeting that you missed, I announced that to the Department of Transportation. I've been trying to get ahold of Don Hale for, for a long time, since that time, he was gonna look into it. I think he did, and I never heard from him. So if Mr. Foreman has a question about that, I'd be more than happy to provide you with the information. It's just stupid and a waste of time. All you have to do is reconvene and pass the budgets the way you're supposed to. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Did you address the lawyer for Swan Valley Transit about that?
Uh, you try to adjust, address the lawyer for Swan Valley Transit, please.
But to the chairman's point, that's a separate board, you know, away from, this is, this is not that board, that's a separate board with its own members and its own attorney, and any legal questions you have...
No, I don't...
Needs to be addressed to that board, not this board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. I don't have a legal question, I know what the requirements are. You taking oath of office, no matter where you are, to uphold the laws of the state of Florida, and if you don't pass that by resolution...
I think what Commissioner Williams is saying, and what I'm saying though, is that needs to be addressed at that Swan Valley Transit meeting, at that board. I mean, this board don't do the, do the budget for that.
I'm just advising the two of you as a courtesy that you're in violation of Florida statutes, that's all, do what you gotta do.
You asked our attorney if you're commenting on the...
I'm not, I told him I was just giving whatever information he needed.
Okay, thanks, Dick. Anybody else? Anybody else? Mr. Williams?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, two things right quick, like, uh, we had, uh, another meeting with the, uh, landowners, uh, in the Bellro Cardo this week, all, all represent, all landowners was, uh, present, uh, had a representative there. Uh, we had our, uh, our zoning person there, and we had a very good meeting, and everybody then more, uh, on board with, uh, with creating that duty in that area. A good meeting. Uh, in fact, we ended up capital in between twenty-five hundred and three thousand acres.
Sounds like we might have some pretty good things happening up there, pretty soon, maybe.
And the second, the second thing is, uh, uh, I, I'm frustrated, nothing I can do about it, and I, I would like for Mr. Kirby to put together a budget, and let's see what it'll be to maintain our rural and urban moor in Columbia County. Uh, he just phoned me this week that the moors on rural moor is at Tuscaloosa Road, somewhere in that area, and I got grass three foot high on the stop side now, and this what we got, just ain't working.
Oh, yeah, I think that's, I, I, I don't think that's something gonna probably get addressed during this moor thing.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think we do need to take a look at that, your, your, that, right, so, yeah.
Am I next?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm...
Are you through?
You through?
Yeah, I could talk about it all night, but you're not gonna...
Okay, all right, go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Oh, Lord. Okay, I, I've heard about this, and I, I, I wanna know, I, I wanna try to direct staff, I want, I want staff to find out and research different insurances for our employees. I know every year it's too late, it's always too late. I wanna, I wanna do, get RFQs, what do we have to do to get independent agent, somebody we can have that can get us other options? I think it's worth looking at, might not be any good, but I think we need to shot every option like we do in everything else we do. So I, I, I hope that y'all can, we can do that or agree to it or whatever we have to do.
Commissioner Hollisworth, I agree, and I have had a talk with David and Lisa about this. They're supposed to be sending out an RFQ for somebody to address, uh, to look at our insurance and give us different ideas.
I, I, you know, you never know.
Yeah, exactly. I don't know where we're at on that. David, can you give us a, an update on that?
Yeah, I have a list of three or four different people who do not sell insurance but are experts in the insurance industry. Uh, we're gonna draft an RFQ beginning October one, I'll get with the purchasing director, and that will go out in October for, so we can start the process in February at the latest. So we will have time to actually look at insurance and figure out if there's a better